Opportunity, Lord, a new day, even to be here gathered together, Lord.
Thank you.
To try to do what's best for this town, or for the residents of this town. Praise you, be with us, that you give each and every council member up here, Lord, wisdom and guidance, that you protect everyone here tonight, Lord, that you give us all a blessing. And we pray that the end of the day here will be done. Amen.
Amen.
Go ahead and call this meeting in order. Did she get it? I guess she got it. Okay. Okay, so the pledge of allegiance. You're gonna start it, everybody, start it. Oh, alright. Alright, go ahead.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, everyone, and ask everybody. Thank you. Got some leads, please.
Great job.
Great job, John, great job.
And we appreciate y'all letting women have this opportunity.
Oh, yes.
We'll be needing you.
Yes.
Now, Corinne, Corinne.
She's not here.
Okay, for the planning and zoning meeting for Temple Life, Ms. McKean, please, if you would, you need to go call.
Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Board member Florence.
Here.
Board member Terry, here. Board member Coon.
Here.
Board member Merrick.
Here.
Town clerk, here. Town attorney.
Here.
Okay, additions, deletions, changes, approval of the agenda. Nobody has any amendments, proposed amendments to it? We can just open the floor for a motion to approve it as is.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments, November.
For the, for the agenda.
Agenda.
We have a second.
Sir.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll post a name. Okay, very well. Agenda is approved as is. Okay, so now for the approval of the meeting minutes for the previous planning and zoning, the November planning and zoning meeting. Unless there's any amendments we want to make to those previous minutes, just need a, a motion to approve them as they are.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the November meeting and the discussion meeting.
No, just the.
Just this one?
Just the planning and zoning meeting from November eighteen.
Just this, okay, planning and zoning.
Okay, you got a second for that?
Second.
Second. All in favor of approving the minutes for the November planning and zoning meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a name. Very well. They are approved, public participation for planning and zoning. I think we do have Mr. Dix. Right, yeah. Brad Dix.
Can you come over?
Oh, apologies, yeah, yeah, please come up, state your name and speak.
Want me to be sworn in?
No.
State your name.
Name, and I'll start the time.
Brad Dix, fourteen to run away. I guess the amount out of my business is coming up first is the site plan, and then the, then the special permit, is that correct?
Correct.
If I was gonna speak to those, rather than me do it at that time, or this time? This time, or those time?
Yeah, that's right, this time.
Alright. Not opposed, you know, we moved in and are living, you know, right behind the collective, and think it's, it's great. It's, you know, I don't, you know, and for Uber shift, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of. This today, I guess, is my fault, but today was the first time I had seen, you know, the agenda coming up, with some exceptions and all. And I guess just a little bit concerned, you know, on the site plan, um, the site plan wasn't scaled, you know, as described. There's no description of existing conditions, or surrounding parcels within four hundred feet. One of my biggest things, there, there is no on-site parking provided. They are in there putting that unapproved parking on Bryant Street. That's been pretty disrepair, if you look at it today. You know, it's been washed out. So I guess if the city's about to permit that, you know, who's gonna be maintaining Bryant Street, and the potholes and stuff from the parking? So, um, a little bit of just concern, you know, about the, the parking. I did not see any attached landscaping plans to it. But one of the things is the adjacent parcel, I guess, to the east, is it part of the site plan or out? I thought I read that it was overflow parking, but it wasn't part of the site plan. Does anybody know?
I'm looking at Alex.
Yeah, this site plan, I think, is.
Is that part of the rental at this time?
That's not part of this site plan, no.
Okay.
Okay, so basically, you know, we're, we're seeing the site plan. It appears that, you know, the lit, parking's limited to just what's there on twenty-seven and Bryant Street. You know, just also, you know, have they confirmed that there's enough distance where people pull in? We just had about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of damage to cars across the street from our office in Lake City, from that type of parking being allowed, and so close. My wife was one of them, so, anyway. But, so I do have just some concerns, and, and then that goes back kind of to the scope of the special permit that's being asked for tonight. Some of these densities and intensities for a little small half acre lot are pretty excessive. I mean, there's no parking, other than just the parking that's there. So we begin to describe activities that seem to be bringing in a lot more people than just to, you know, stopping in to eat. Number one note that I would make, and I can leave this with you, but open mic was described as exhibit. That is not listed as, as a use within, within the permitted accessory uses, so.
Okay, your, your time's up. I'll give, I guess, if that was a pose, I'll give another, what, minute?
Pretty sure. If you've done it. Just, just realize that anything I say here, that's the only testimony that has to be entered, if anything was challenged, so limiting to three minutes. I can turn this in, but number one, I guess, your exhibit has items listed which are not permitted in the ordinance, and I would ask you not to deviate from the ordinance. The ordinance also protects residential neighborhoods from, from sound measure, from the property lines, within ambient ranges, and do not impact surrounding residential uses. Studies have shown that seventy decibels is the point to where, within industry standards, is considered disturbing. So the exhibit removes the protection that we have about ambient noise, and puts in a six P M. or later notice of no decibels over seventy, which is considered disturbing to a residential district. That would also make me think that before six o'clock, they could be more than seven. So I, I do have a concern that your exhibit is going against the ordinance, and is allowing louder noises.
Okay, alright, Mr. Dix. Thank you very much, yeah, time's up. We gotta move along, so thank you. Yeah, you can go ahead, yes, submit that, I guess, too. Did you, did you have any, anything you wanted to submit, you said you had the list?
No, no, no. Yep, yep, let me submit that, and so, yeah.
I thought you said you had something.
Here, I'll take it.
Yeah, you had, if you wanted.
Thank you.
Do recognize exhibit A for two exhibits.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public participation, if not, we'll wrap it up, and move on to the actual items at hand here. Okay? Very well, on to new business, consideration of the special use permit. First and foremost, so this, this special use permit is strictly just so that a commercial whose own business can exist within a hundred feet of a residence. Mrs. McKean, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I guess I should back up as well.
Along with the other conditions listed on exhibit A.
Right enough, so it's all, yeah. And, other piece I was gonna say is, and we won't really be able to bring it up until the actual town council meeting, which is a settlement agreement. But basically, upon approval, everybody here has gone over this way more times than I have. But upon approval of everything that we've been over, I don't know how many times, and as you see in the packet, they agree to settle a lawsuit. Now, we can't hold on to settlement agreements until the, until the next meeting, the town council meeting, but just so that everyone knows, these two, these two items tie into that, so just FYI, I didn't go over that program. Yeah, so, so for the special use permit, so as far as the collective, whether or not they can legitimately exist there within a hundred feet of another business. Questions, comments, or concerns about that? Final, just need a motion to approve the.
This has nothing to do with the special conditions they want, right?
Yes, it does. It's all part of the special use permit.
It does have something to do with it.
Yes, it's part of the special use permit as exhibit A.
I don't know, we didn't even talk about it.
Yeah, I don't wanna go without.
Okay.
No one is.
So I'm asking, yeah, so go ahead, so what's, uh.
Well, part of the settlement, for example, were things that didn't really fall under food park. Open mics and stuff like that, and sound barriers, barriers, not the word, but sounds.
So the open mics.
Karaoke, open mics, meetings, those aren't really food parks. And I'm not saying I'm against it. It just doesn't fall under food park. Food parks get food, sit down and eat, or get up and go.
That's a food truck.
Well, they're under a food park.
Right, well, what you're referencing is a food truck. A food truck is you go and you get it, and you leave. A food truck park is a different thing. There's a distinction as well, I'm sorry.
Is there any business that can set up a outside band and play music and not without permit in Boilout? Any business besides doing their own?
No.
Not that I'm aware of, as, as we, as we, as we say.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, but. Suicide possums are restaurant, they have band out there all the time. And that's in town, limit.
They're not in town, near residential.
They are, they are.
The possum is in town.
It's in town limits, and there's residents around it.
There you go, so the answer is yes.
Okay.
Do what?
The answer is yes.
They don't have.
They're allowed, I mean.
They do not.
Oh, they have.
They do not have a permit to do what they do.
Nobody has challenged.
Should they have a permit?
If they're not in the ordinance, you should have a permit.
What she just said, no one has challenged them.
Right.
And, and on that note, when you're, when you do challenge them, you know, there's not a quote enforcer or anyone to follow up on that. And it jumps to a lawsuit, which we don't, nobody wants to be involved in a lawsuit. Your comments?
My comments are that this before you is the work of Lowell Garrett, who is your planner, Ms. McKean, our attorney, Scott Siegel, myself, looking at the land development code, looking at the new ordinance that we passed. And again, is it, is it a food truck park, which is different than just a standalone food truck, and acceptable uses and things. Also, making some, what, do you wanna use the word concessions? I use concessions, some agreements to say, okay, these are things that are important to the folks at the collective, to try to keep their business profitable and go forward. And after a lot of going back and forth, this is what both sides agreed to present to the council. Now, again, that's why we're here. The council would say, no, we're not comfortable with it, and that's fine, absolutely fine. And, and then it would go back, and it would continue, and, and maybe we come up with something different, maybe we don't, and the lawsuit would continue. But what's before you is what is based on, and, and I, I think you guys know Mr. Garrett can't travel at nine yes and nine issue, he can't, he's more of the guru on the planning issues. Of, of their consideration of our rules, and what we can and can't, you know, make as exceptions, concessions, et cetera. So this is what we have, and, and this is what's before you. And again, you guys can, you guys can accept it, and object it, you can modify it. Of course, all by the way, you agree. It can modify. But it's basically a, a proposal that would end the, the, not only the lawsuit, but also the, the issue of the collective amendment that we're gonna go forward. And, and 'cause like you said, you know, the other folks, you don't even know, I couldn't even catch the name of the place you're talking about, if they're operating outside of, of our permitting, then, you know, if someone said no one brought up and made a complaint about it, no one's brought forward, well, like I said, that's a, that's a lead, something like that.
And Mr. Life, so as far as the music, so here in the, in the ordinance that was voted on a pass for the food truck park, it says accessory uses may be permitted, if there are no prohibiting impediments, yada, yada, yada. Accessory land uses may include karaoke, music, et cetera, et cetera. So it's all, so I'm not, so I guess what that isn't covered by the ordinance is the concern? Because what you mentioned is covered anyway.
Well, I'm interested, is covered, that they could have karaoke around there more nights a month?
So if you go to page five.
There's volume limitations you're skipping. It mandates a volume limitation.
Right, if there are no impediments, and it mentions the sound and the decibels, correct?
Yeah, no, decibel, no.
Hold on, hold on. Let's have a word.
Not worth it.
So.
Listen, I can't even believe I'm in this. Okay, I'm all for them, I'm, God, I'm telling you, I'm all for them. But I don't believe that our residents, every Friday night, he can't have nothing else at his house, because they're having karaoke over there. And, and that's been ordinance in Boilout forever. That's not in the new ordinance, what, what, the, the footage.
Karaoke's in the.
I'm not sure.
Karaoke's in the new ordinance.
I'm saying it's in the old one, I'm saying, how much? I mean, where, where does Scott, I mean. You have to get him to let you be, I can say.
And that, does that fall under the new ordinance of the food park? 'Cause I'm not against it either.
Right, so I don't.
I'm just still, still not fully understanding the food park. 'Cause I've been to food parks all over the state, and have never walked in on karaoke. And I'm not against karaoke, but I am in favor of neighbors being comfortable. And when I said something about the suicide possum, of course, I know it's in town, 'cause it is part of our town, but I see it like out in the boon docks, which is not appropriate, but you know what I mean, as compared to the collective being right in.
Council, council, sorry.
Um, can I interrupt something and say something?
Yeah, one second, let, let council, let me go, they can go. Florence. Florence, oh, oh. Sorry.
It says, it says in this ordinance that we passed, we passed this. And we wrote this up, and we passed this. Maybe not in the law, I'm not sure. But me and Bill passed this. It says accessory use may include farmer's market, stepping and flea market, meeting and picnic space, exercise and karaoke, and music, which maintains that the sound as measured from the property line is within ambient ranges and does not impact surrounding resident uses. Period. So how do we define that?
How do we define the ambient range?
One of the conditions for the special use approval is that it be facing inward measured from the property line, seven decibels or less.
And who's gonna monitor that? And I know these guys are honest, I'm.
Yeah, right.
But I'm not gonna run down there and look at the knobs.
Wait, 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 you're not expecting to, who's monitoring anything right now? Oh, go ahead, Ms. McKean.
Seventy decibels is defined as the noise coming from a washing machine or a dishwasher. Well, we're in trouble, y'all haven't seen my washing machine. And also, the definition in the ordinance of a food truck park shall mean a parcel land containing more than one food truck pad, where food trucks serve as the principal use of the parcel. That's where a food truck park is. It's just one, more than one food truck. Uh, two, four, or? It depends on the parcel. 'Cause the, all of the, in my own observation, all the food park vendors seem cool, like they're clean, they're in the right spaces, there's plenty of room, dah, 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 dah.
Right, I'll, I'll let, go ahead, keep, keep short, yeah.
So is that a good question? Uh, state it.
Come to the front, please.
Oh, yes.
So to answer the question as far as the land development code and your noise warnings, it's obviously, there's no mention of the decibel or anything. It mentions that there should be measured, there's not a decibel reading. So you go based off, maybe from the county, which has a noise ordinance, the music ends or noise ends at ten P M. As far as that actual land development code, there's no mention anywhere, not only for food truck parks, anywhere.
Right, so, and, so really, they're being more limited, because we're limiting them to seventy decibels.
Exactly.
If, if another, if another business did do it, and we were to say, hey, you're being too loud, they say, where does it say I'm being too loud?
It doesn't say.
Whereas here, we're actually imposing a limitation on.
Correct.
Do you have a quick?
Okay.
I just want to add one more point about suicide possum, they have that fence.
It doesn't have.
So, okay, at this point, we'll head.
I'm learning, that's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'll open up the floor for a motion on, on approval of this.
One more thing, we, suicide, that, but, where are the residents that discuss to them? Jason? You're not in the split that, that Mr. Dix is in. They're in the woods.
No, and they're a lot, but they're a lot louder than seven.
Oh, I understand that. I understand that, period.
I'm the first house on the center of the sun. I have, I have a row of pine trees that separate, separate me from them.
Not much.
I told you the right gate store.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
They do.
Alright. This is not new rodeo, I'm gonna open up the floor for a motion for approval or denial of the special use permit.
That's for clarification.
No, 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 okay.
Alright, I'll have my attorney to represent the next.
Okay, very well. So I'll go ahead and open the floor for a motion to confirm. Open more due to the special use permit.
This is just a sentence in a meeting. This is just a sentence in a next meeting.
This is, this is to approve.
This is approved or passed?
The planning and zoning board of the specially used permits and site plans. It does not go to town council.
It don't go to town council.
No.
Town council won't let it approved.
No. So is the karaoke, is that the main noise or music, or? Now I'm looking at you, Rida.
Is it the main, I'm sorry?
If there's a, I'm just saying Friday, are those planned for Friday? I mean, have y'all thought that far in?
Last year, we did some new karaoke on Fridays. It was a family friendly event.
Could you come up to the party, please? I know she asked you to speak.
Last year, we were doing family friendly karaoke. We have people come saying, we used to measure it at the fence, and it was never anything ridiculous we weren't doing, but this sort of side possum or the bars are doing. This wasn't the type of place where it was that kind of party. Those kids running around.
And actually, if you're referring to alcohol, that's a whole nother thing, and that, and they do have alcohol at suicide possum, so that could increase the music, you know what I mean? But, um, I'm just concerned if the neighbors need one free weekend, something like that. I can never hear y'all at my house, and I'm just around.
We're on Aspen Park.
Now, we, even last year, we didn't do it every week. I don't know if we would, if I can say right how we would, but.
So it's, it's limited in the conditions for the special use for four events per month? The floor is open?
That's one a week, so maybe it could be limited to two per month.
Okay, Mr. Pat. Do we, do we have a motion to approve this?
I have a real stupid question first.
Yes.
So this number four about the sound levels.
Yeah.
Does there actually have to be a number on here? A decimal number, or can it fall back to the actual food truck park, where we're saying we're not impacting our neighbors? Is that?
It could be.
Does the question make sense? Number one, does the question make sense? Number two, is it a dumb question?
No, it's not a dumb question. I mean, it could, it could be whatever also could be the council decides. I would think we would want an actual objective measurable number. But, and, and, and again, okay. And, and again, you know, we're actually putting a limitation on the, on the agenda. There are other businesses that are operating that have.
I, I agree, I agree that we've come a long way, and that they are leading us halfway. I fully agree that, with that, but I also am weary that seventy decibels after six P M. It's at that ten P M., some, or nine P M., somebody wants to go to bed, somebody that's that close can't.
It's seventy decibels.
What?
After six P M., and then after that, supposed to be lower.
Says after. Shall not exceed seventy after six P M.
Yeah.
So we, okay, so we.
What are y'all, what, what's the closing hours?
Ten.
The food trucks currently close at seven o'clock, 'cause last year, uh, it was, we were told that we had to follow the previous ordinance, which was.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm offering this new ordinance.
Ten.
I mean, we agreed on something.
Ten, yeah.
Ten.
The noise ordinance is also ten P M. That's why. For the county. Yeah, that's why, you know, people should be able to go to bed without any interference from a business or anything like that. There's sound using the washing machine.
I just, sound levels measured at the property line shall not exceed seventy after six P M., so it could be sixty-nine, according to where it's written there.
Yeah.
Until ten P M.
Until ten P M.
Ten.
Just out of your washing machine.
And the way that we plan on doing the music now, it's gonna be in a center of the property, facing the gas station, and you have a property that you purchased. So I'm pretty sure it's way less than seven P M., Mr. Bruce Davis.
What you did.
Right, the property. The noise won't be protected in that direction.
And would, would it be fair to say that property you just purchased will help open you parking as well?
Almost everything.
'Cause I'm thinking, if you're having a karaoke event, there's gonna be a lot more people there than just coming up for food.
And to answer, Mr. Brian, keep reference to parking, we actually right now rent a vacant property in front of the first store.
Yeah.
The first store and I share, and we plan on using that for over, over for parties, as well as the property we rent by next to the collective, that we use already as over for parking. I think that's why your planner made the suggestion that parking wasn't necessary, because we already have a way to. If I were to do it all by itself, I'd be, it's already way low.
Thank you, look, I mean, it's.
Thank you.
It's, it's almost at thirty P M., I mean, other than I can have ten, plus my ass. It's our other meeting, my, I mean.
It's almost six thirty-five.
We, we, we'll open up for a motion for about fifteen minutes, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve exhibit A of the conditions for the special use permits.
Do we have a second?
You have to approve the whole special use permit.
Oh, yeah, thank you, I'll just, I'll just.
For the entire special use permit.
And second.
Well, 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 we'll get to second. Do we have a second? I second the motion, all in favor, say aye. Oh, or, Mrs. McKean, I guess if you would, do a vote, please, that way we don't have to be back and forth with.
Alright. Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Council member Florence?
Nay.
Council member Terry?
Nay.
Council member Coon?
Nay.
Council member Merrick?
Aye.
Okay. The vote fails, the special use permit for the collective is not approved as it is currently written. But I guess, let me ask, all the council members who voted aye, what specifically would it take to get you to aye?
For me, my concern was having the karaoke every weekend. And I know we said they might not have it every weekend, but it's granting them permission to have it. So if someone lives across the street, close to where New Earth was, they can't have a family barbecue on a night, and I'm, I've already heard about the washing machine, but I just wanna make sure it's fair for the residents and the collective.
So what change specifically would you like to see?
I just said.
Two.[1735.44] Two events.
For four to two, okay.
Go ahead, Alex.
So that means that you're going to make a resolution to amend the food truck park ordinance? Because the food truck park ordinance says four.
It doesn't say four karaoke events, does it?
It says four. It's item number fifteen.
Okay. Then no, I don't wanna change the whole ordinance.
Are you good with it as is, or?
Do you have ordinance right there?
Um, special events.
Do we even have a time on it?
It says.
In the food truck ordinance?
Can I say something?
I mean, how many times for? Do we have that in ordinance?
It says special events.
Special uses may be permitted.
It says special events shall not exceed four per month unless so permitted by the town council in advance. That's everything, that's not limited, that's not karaoke, that's everything that's special use. That's listed on that list.
Is yoga a special use?
Four per month.
Because if you have yoga, you're gonna probably do that more than four times a month, aren't you?
It's four, it's four things per month that are allowed.
Does that include yoga?
It includes the items that were on the list.
Oh, will you change my vote?
Alright, floor's open for another motion to approve the special use permit.
Stu?
No. Floor's open for a motion to approve. Floor's open for a motion.
A new one.
A new motion.
I make a motion that we approve the entire special use permit.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Do we need a vote? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay.
Did you vote on the aye?
Well, here it is. Okay. Alright, so that's the special use permit. Moving on to the site plan. I guess I'll open it up. Questions, comments, concerns about the site plan? And just for the record, the main two things that the town council and the collective have gone back and forth on is the parking and the sewage. So just FYI, the sewage was, we were gonna, per the food truck park ordinance, we were gonna make the, put in the new grease interceptors, which had, what was that, I think like a nitrogen, something very, very, yeah.
We gotta wait.
Right, right, so that's one of the ones that we had discussed a lot back and forth. That's one of the, in here, the conditions for the, for the site plan, and the other one is the, is the parking. And as it reads, and you read item number two, the access will be limited to the current, current cut, which is there along Bryan Street, and there's, I don't know how many. However, quite a few more, he's basically there.
He just explained the parking, and we did the grease interceptor thing several months ago. Were those portable, like wings that they need to go dump their stuff, Alex?
That is part of the variance that was requested for the site plan.
It's number nine on the conditions.
Yeah. It was four, we grant, we ask for a variance for two, which is part of the site plan.
Yeah, so what's on here? So I'll open it up, questions, comments, concerns from the council on the site plan? It's how their business currently exists. We've gone back and forth on this. I think everyone up here knows how long.
How do you say we've gone back and forth when you've just become a mom?
Right, so I don't.
I'm being serious, I don't mean that disrespectful.
No, no, I know, that's all I'm gonna tell you.
What are you doing that we are not aware of?
What specifically?
Whatever you're referring to.
So, so we, as in the town council, because I'm a member of the council, so I say we as in the council. Not we as an I back when this was voted, that I was here, present and voting for it. Does that, does that make sense?
And, and I'll sound real ignorant, but I'm going back to the grease interceptor. Why, what is going to be the way to dispose of the grease if we vote yea today? And I was talking to Alex.
You're waiting for.
Whoa, 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 whoa. As the presiding officer, I get to recognize who doesn't speak. I'll try my hand at it, Alex, then you go.
Excuse me, can we have another election?
Oh, yeah. There are certificates that you get every time you go and dispose of it, right? So it's something that can be checked whether or not you're actually doing it.
Correct.
But you go ahead and, so.
D E P gave us a variance to use our current septic for two food trucks. Every food truck before getting permitted has to be inspected at the commissary, which is where they empty out their water. The council doesn't request that, the county doesn't request it, that's the licensing authority. So every food truck goes to their commissary to empty out water. Me putting a grease interceptor there was for my convenience. The ordinance made it that I had to put enough for four trucks, which would have been too expensive, and I probably would have been approved for my variance. So that's why I asked for a variance to allow me to use two, and the other two trucks to be, to be going to their commissary. To dump their gray water, which is black water for food trucks.
And it's my understanding that we agreed.
We haven't agreed on anything yet. We haven't approved the variance yet.
So this area, what was your, I'll make you catch, you're awful.
No, not really, but we, I guess we didn't formally vote, but we agreed, because the forum may have brought it up again. And we had agreed informally, I guess, in this room, that there was a grease interceptor for the two trucks. And then those portable ones would dump and keep a record book of it. And I don't care, I'm just trying to figure out what is what. In my, in my own mind, and I'm not a food truck person, I would think crazy wings would need to dump grease. Where the ice cream truck would not need to dump grease.
No, so the grease interceptor is to empty out their water, because they cook, and there's oil in the water, you need a grease interceptor that collects the grease, before emptying the water into the actual septic. I have on sight a greasing that collects grease and it get it pumped out, and I get paid back for use, they use that grease. So that's not that. They're dumping their water at the commissary. Their water includes grease from what they use for cleaning utensils. That's what the grease interceptors are for.
And I get, Mrs. Burkine, or whoever, correct me if I'm wrong, that was never formally approved.
That is correct.
By the council, okay, right?
You're stealing, right to jail. You're playing music too loud, right to jail, right away. You're driving too fast, jail. Slow, jail. You're charging too high prices for Squatters.
Ah, just a little.
Glasses. You're right to jail. You undercooked fish.
You're right to jail.
I didn't hear the gap with that.
Well, I mean, if I bang it, I don't think it's gonna make them find the button any faster.
That's what.
So, okay, thank you. Any questions, comments or concerns for the site plan as it is? Before I open the floor for a motion?
Is the town got any plans on fixing the side of that road where the town parking's at? Because it isn't, but it's yet.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm just gonna stay up here for the rest of the night.
Yeah, everybody.
So there is a grant that can get funded through Swan River Management that will pay for that whole thing. A lot of the reason why that is, is just because we receive all the town runoff water, and it floods my property. Swan River Management told me that I went in, we can go in there, Connie, maybe the number two, Mr. Clay Swager? To apply for a engineering plan. I went ahead and I got with someone else, who said that they would go ahead and do the engineering, and they would also apply for the grants. Condition on approval, which I have already been told would have been approved, the council just needs to go ahead and sign that. And that's fifty thousand dollars, that would be free money. You guys just need to do it.
That would help everybody.
That would help everybody.
That's for the flooding.
On Bryan, that's.
That's for the flooding.
But that would improve that whole thing, fifty thousand dollars to improve that, and to create water mitigation. Again, all that runoff water comes into my property, Bryan, and just goes, so no matter what I put there, if I put mold, if I put anything, it just gets picked up and drawn over. Same thing with the dirt right in front of that area. So no matter what we do, until you don't mitigate that water issue, there's something we can do. That probably could seem to be exposed.
Alright, thank you, Alex. Alright, at this point I'm gonna open up the floor for a motion for the site plan here. Site plan.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three oh one, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the site plan twenty-three oh one.
Do we have a second?
I say.
And free the collective.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Alright, there we go, we got that. Now, and before, before we, before we adjourn. Councilwoman Catherine Terry, to address what I think might have been your underlying concern, which may have, have or have not anything to do with our overall student rule. Yep, so if there's a concern, I'm not gonna answer on my own behalf, there's no point. But, we have Mr. Landry right there, if you're here to ask.
And I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Oh, okay, well, I'll let you know, as far as me speaking with the collective and the attorneys, to assist with the development of these agreements.
That's your job.
Right, okay, very well. It seemed to me that's what you were insinuating and getting at. If not, very well. Alright.
Here, it's my understanding you were to be part of that meeting, and bring as an individual representative from the town of Fort White, where then the council, including your vote, votes to either approve of or deny of.
Yes.
So I'm not sure what your.
I, I had.
Uncomfortability is.
Well, it had been made though to me that there was concern that I was doing this, I was, oh, and councilwoman Catherine Terry also has concerns about that.
If you have a concern with councilwoman Catherine Terry, I would suggest you come to Catherine Terry. And you did, the awareness you just did.
Right.
But you did on hearsay.
Right, I thought that's what you were getting at, I thought, wrong, wrong.
I would say you're wrong.
Very well, and I'm wrong. Okay. Steps and comments, before we open the floor for adjournment? Okay, floor's open for a, for a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? That one's adjourned, passes. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay? Very well. Planning and zoning meeting adjourned. Moving on to. The town council meeting, alright, officiant's changes approval of the agenda. So, I got a couple things. One, the actual settlement agreement with the collective, they want to put that on here, approve that. So this can finally be done with the bench. There was also a meeting that, that was Commissioner Ford, it was myself, and with some of the town, well, I guess had to do the county contracts amount meeting over the water with the D E P that we had. And I think here, there's a cease and, yeah, there is a cease and desist letter that the county sent.
Mayor, just for the record, I was not in a meeting. I was not in that.
You weren't, oh, you weren't in the D E P meeting?
No, I had not been.
Oh, very well, okay, very well, thank you. So, yeah, so there are those two items, just put it out there, if we wanna add those to the agenda, the settlement agreement with the collective, so we can.
Are you adding it?
Are you saying?
Well, a motion has to be made to add that to the.
Okay, so this one should be added to number nine, really, right?
I'm not opposed, let's add it on that.
Probably make it separate, one and nine, just make it eleven, and the.
Settlement.
Settlement agreement twelve.
Or the first, or we can make it, okay.
One and two.
One, yeah.
Mayor, one and two.
The settlement agreement, I say we make that the first one, then the. Well, we can make one.
There's someone you want to say?
Okay.
What, I'm confused, what is one now? The settlement agreement? And what is, what will be, two will be the presentation by Brown and Brown?
Correct.
Okay, and then on down to the.
Twelve.
Twelve will be the D E P.
Yeah.
Is that discussing the water?
Correct.
I wanna make sure we get the water on this again.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want about this letter. That's where that, where is that at?
We're adding it to.
This is number eleven?
Twelve.
Twelve. We'll just, this one, we'll just throw it on, we'll just throw it on for the last one, so we'll bump it. Set up.
This one and the water together?
Yes, as guests.
We can do that?
Okay, we got, we got clean and conscious paperwork. Where are we talking about the settlement? Is it number one, or is it number eleven?
Settlement is one.
Okay.
D E P and this?
Is number twelve.
Twelve.
Yes.
Well, same thing.
Good, motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the adjourn.
Alright, second?
Second.
Very well, alright, all opposed say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay? Very well. Passes to the, uh, I meant the agenda. So the actual settlement agreement. Somewhere here, okay, so.
Hold on, you may get through two and three first.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes for last month's town, or town council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from November eighteenth, twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
All the favor of approving the meeting, the meeting minutes for the prior town council meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay? Town council meetings for last month are approved, and public comment.
Did we have any?
I don't have any.
Okay. Alright, so we'll jump, we'll jump right into new, to new business, okay. Number one, now, the number one here, the settlement agreement. And I guess, maybe I don't know if it makes sense to have you go up?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, as you know, the, the vote for this, like, I can actually look left, or, there.
Alex is here.
Oh, there you are, okay, I'm sorry. Had filed a lawsuit after we passed the food park, food truck park ordinance. And that's been ongoing, and the entire council has worked on resolving that. And we have worked with our coverage council, Scott Segal, who was appointed by the, by the Florida Board, to represent us in this matter of Lowell. Garrett has worked very hard on it. Ms. Connie's worked very hard on it. The old mayor worked very hard on it, and the new mayor's worked very hard on it. And, and so what we have put together collectively is basically what you just passed in the planning and zoning meeting. Where the collective will be able to go forward under our new ordinance. They will abide by our new ordinance with the agreements and stipulations listed in the special use permit, special use permit and site plan that we just approved in the planning and zoning. So with that, what this document says is that if you, as a council, agrees with and passes what you party passed, then the collective will dismiss their lawsuit. And so what we would need, and I would recommend from the council, is to approve this settlement agreement and put this committee. And we'll go on with this part of their life. We'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
I make a motion to approve it and go on with our lives.
I say.
And there was no hidden agenda in there.
All the favor of approving this settlement agreement, adjourn, say aye? Aye, opposed say nay? Passed. Alright, very well, now, number two, presentation by Brown and Brown Risk Management, representing for government insurance, y'all wanna go ahead and come up and.
Hello, my name is Devon Donnelly.
Hi, I'm Sople, Brown and Brown Insurance.
Yep, and we are from Brown and Brown Public Sector. We have prepared a short presentation for you today, I think you should read this one. Just to go over what we are thinking, where we're currently at, and how we plan to move forward. Thank you so much. So on the first slide, we're just gonna start with a quick company overview. So Brown and Brown is Florida domicile, we just hit eighty-five years. We are a publicly traded company, but have deep roots in Florida, since we are kind of born and raised here. We are a specialized division of Brown and Brown, focused solely on Florida public entities, and the public sector team is based in Hardey Coney Beach corporate headquarters. So on the next page, to talk specifically about our Florida public entity team, there are thirty of us that handle about two hundred clients, again, specifically Florida public entities. We are focused and specialized in that specific. Um, we are focused and specialized in that specifically. Um, and on that third bullet point, I wanna call out that over the last thirty-two years, we have refined our resources specifically tailored to keep the needs of entities similar to Fort White. So, getting into what differentiates Brown and Brown Public Sector from your current insurance broker, who is F M I T, um, we are, um, sorry. We have local experience in the area similar to Fort White, Columbia County, Gilchrist County Union, many of which we have had the pleasure of working with for over ten years and some up to as many as thirty years. And then on the next slide, this is something that was included in the agenda, and goes into more detail about what you could expect should the property and housing insurance in Gilchrist County be moved to Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. So, Brown and Brown, we are the brokers, and we are your advocates between town of Fort White and Preferred, where the coverage is placed. I've lost over this one, but what's important to take away is that with Brown and Brown, you can expect to receive more than just insurance coverage, um, as well as your own support from us and the carrier. So, getting into the twenty twenty-five proposed premium, what we have discussed with Connie, um, is to take over the insurance coverage starting one-one of twenty twenty-five. We've been able to provide significant premium savings, changing from about fifty thousand annualized with F M I T to an annualized rate of forty-nine thousands for the remainder of this policy year. You would be paying thirty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. We've also been able to negotiate on your behalf a two-year rate guarantee with Preferred, which will ensure that regardless of how the market changes, you are obligated to those rates for your shares. And then below that, you'll be able to see some of the additional services that are included in your premium at no additional cost to the town. And what's not included here is, as your brokers, we will be able to attend meetings as needed, conduct pre-renual meetings, and ongoing services. Getting into some of the coverage improvements, so I think what's most important to take away here between us and F M I T is that with Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust, Brown and Brown acting as the broker that we have, you're going to be buying more insurance for less money. So, you will see that we have added crime coverage, which the town does not currently have with F M I T, deadly weapons protection, which is at no cost to the town, at zero dollars in premium, as well as higher limits for general liability and cyber. The general liability limit's been raised from three hundred thousand to a million, and the cyber from a million to two million. Getting into some of the additional services that the, that Preferred offers, um, we're gonna talk about Preferred Priority, which this is a service that Preferred offers in case there are any natural disasters, storm, flooding, fire. You have resources available to the town, or the town has resources available to them that are gonna step in within twenty-four hours as soon as physically able to help assist, mitigate, um, mitigate damage, make repairs. This, and us as the brokerage, we would facilitate the claims process to ensure that anything is handled quickly and smoothly. And then, just to touch quickly on the loss control services, this is a proactive approach to ensure that any burdens that the town might be exposed to are mitigated. There are in-person, there are online resources, as well as a tips program, which at the town, we're just spending ten thousand dollars on safety initiatives, which you might already have that budgeted for, such as sidewalk repairs, um, driver training, those sorts of things, the town will be reimbursed five thousand dollars. So, I know we ran through that quickly, but just wanted to give a little, um, overview of what we're proposing. Like I said, um, based off of what we've gone through with your F M I T coverage, you should be deep dive into that prior to coming here to put together the proposal, negotiate with Preferred on your behalf, and as I mentioned, you'll be buying more robust insurance coverage for less premium, and based off of the conversations we had, closure of having with Connie, work here to be your advocates and your resource here around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess, while we got here, question and or comments or concerns on it?
I think Connie's gonna be one of the brains with this.
As you know, uh, insurance has been going up, up, and last year, at budget time, I had done some investigation and had called several insurance carriers to get quotes on our insurance. Currently, our premium is fifty-eight thousand four hundred and nine dollars a year. It started out at thirty-six thousand. So, I was told, not this past budget cycle, but previous budget cycle, that we should stay with F M I T because it was the best deal around. Well, apparently, that isn't exactly the case, as we have found with, um, getting this quote from Brown and Brown through Pigott. And, um, so, more insurance for less money, to me, is really a no-brainer.
I agree.
Yep, disagree. Okay, so floor's looking for a motion, now we're gonna wanna switch over to Brown and Brown from our credit providers, more insurance, apparently sounds like it, and less money.
Do you have input on that?
I have, yes. We're currently, as you heard, involved in a lawsuit, which should be wrapping up, but you, I believe you need, getting coverage one-one, I don't know that that lawsuit will be a hundred percent wrapped up just from the standpoint of filing paperwork and getting a judge's order, et cetera, et cetera. Um, by one-one, I wouldn't want F M I T to somehow pull back or drop coverage or whatever, because, like I said, they're, they're providing counsel now. So, I wanna make sure that there wasn't any, we didn't hurt ourselves by any rollover there. And I guess the other, the other question I would have is, and I haven't seen it coming, that's fine, but your, your litigation coverage, is it based on claims for compensation only? And like, if someone's injured in one of our county vehicles, obviously you can cover, um, you know, in this particular case that we have ongoing, now it's all about the criticals of documentation. There, there are claims for legislative action taken by the board, but there was an additional claim for compensation. And so, I would wanna make sure, and we can talk more about this later, but I wanna make sure that we had the same type of coverage that we have now covered these last years.
Right.
Because this is where it's really gonna come up, right? You're most likely to get sued for something that a board does in a meeting, whether a decision made or not.
So, we're actually, with this proposal, we're, we're increasing your public official liability, that's what that covers files under for board decisions, we're increasing that from three hundred thousand to a million, and really, to get to the million, you have to, the claims bill, state would have to basically say that you're breaching or paying go above and beyond sovereignty, but we've got coverage in there for that. Non-monetary claims, such as, you know, some sort of action where we're not really trying to get money, we're just trying to get things done, that is cap, it's currently cap under F M I T, so I think there's a hundred thousand dollars in defense towards those. But, yeah, the coverage, really, between F M I T and the Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust, those are the two big, robust trusts in the state. Uh, the majority of municipalities are either in one or the other, and the coverage is, you know, we sell against F M I T quite a bit, and really, they're, they're apples to apples.
So, you're saying yours is comparable to theirs?
Absolutely, and theirs is comparable, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
In terms of how the benefits of coverage works sometimes?
So, can we safely vote for this right now? If they're starting one run, you're uncomfortable with that?
Well, and, just out of curiosity, when was that claim, was that pre-ten-one, pre-renual? When that claim was started?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're gonna defend that through the end of the claim. It's, uh, there isn't like a claim runoff, where they just, it's usually they shot them down, they're still gonna work on those claims.
I mean, we've been thinking these other things, right?
Ten minutes, so it should be done. But, no, they would, well, I can't speak for them, but typically, the way the insurance works, that defense will settle out through the remainder of the claim.
Should we do a conditional approval, maybe just a conditional approval based on what this drops or anything?
February one?
True, or from now to then? If you're comfortable, we can just...
I think so, probably.
Good, good. Okay, floor's open for a motion, uh, Brown and Brown, uh, I guess technically it's Preferred Government Insurance Trust, to switch to them from where we currently are. And F M I T, floor's open for a motion for that.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion, uh, will we move from our current insurance to Brown and Brown Risk Management, representing Preferred Government Insurance?
Uh, second? All the favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll say nay. Very well. Gases?
Bye-bye.
I have insurance. Okay, next item on the agenda, now, number three, so this request from Fort White Soccer Club. So, they, they wanna use the community center and, uh, and have a D-Wave, they're doing a winter social, I think they're actually might be doing things too. Yeah, January third and January, like, January third, January fourth.
That's a yes.
You wanna discuss that, or where to go?
I'm here to talk about it.
If you need, okay.
No, we're for you.
All right, we're looking for a motion to approve the use of the community center for Fort White Soccer Club?
I'll make the motion to approve the Fort White Soccer Club to use the community center on those dates.
Very well. All the favor say aye? Very well. I'll say nay. All right, Soccer Club to use the community center, free of charge, both two dates. Uh, very similar, very similar, uh, very next item here, the new, I'm for Cherry Hill Lodge, is also the question to use, the community center for Christmas Eve, summer giveaway.
That's a yes.
So, all on the floor for...
I make the motions to allow the Tim Fudge and his group, the Masons, to use Cherry, to use the community center for the Christmas dinner giveaway.
Second? On all, uh, in favor of the... Oh, who's that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I ceased, I didn't hear this, I just said.
Uh, okay, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, I'll say nay. All right, very well, Cherry Hill Lodge can use the community center, free of charge for their giveaway. New item, uh, Doug, you got Doug? Yes, Doug, uh, you can go ahead and come up and speak about new item, uh, five, Main Street at the train depot. I'll give you a few minutes on that, Doug.
It will be a few minutes, no point. I just wanna share the email that I received from Tallahassee, if you can pass that now. Well, let me read it to the public first. I asked Tallahassee, in a forty-year history of Main Street, did we in fact become the smallest city to win the, the, the executive program for the next three years? And they said, you are now, Hastings has a population of eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight, they were previously our smallest community. So, I thought that was very distinctive for Fort White. And for the depot, we did have a state historic grant, we were not able to get it funded, and I've been discussing some funding options for Connie to bring back to you next year. But we are still moving forward to have the depot on the national register, and so I will be back in Tallahassee in April and make a presentation at that time. That's all day for me, stand right there.
All right, thank you very much.
Question. Mr. Doug, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Disapproval on Main Street. Isn't it that we don't have no say in, in what that group does down there?
Well, what, what I think you need to understand is, you're the landlord for Main Street, and you're paying for the executive traffic for three years. And not only is the Main Street group responsible to you, they're responsible for Main Street in Tallahassee. There'll be train sessions, and there'll be your commission, monthly meetings. So, they'll, they'll be, they'll be on guard with you.
I'm under, I'm under, under the impression that that is not what was said, that... I'm under the impression that it was said, that we do not control them in any way.
You do, you do control them, the landlord, and the payment.
As the landlord.
Yeah.
If, if we accept the way it is, then we're accepting something that is not how it was presented to us. And nobody wants Main Street more than I do, or I should rephrase that, nobody wants to see Fort White improve more than I do, and I think Main Street's a great program. I don't think I fully understand it, as far as the funding comes from here or there, but we were, we agreed and voted upon Doug going up there and trying to win that for us, with us being the, the last vote of what happens up there. And we committed three years of twenty-four thousand dollars, so that's, it's not exact, but it's about seventy-five dollars, that we're gonna give to the Main Street program in addition to all the travel expenses and training fees and stuff like that. And so, I'm, I'm like, really don't understand something you're the landlord of, that you have no control over. Like, as a landlord, I'm not gonna tell you what to eat if you're renting my home, but I'm not gonna pay you to rent my home.
Everybody in this room can be a member of Main Street, and the bylaws that I have, the Main Street group told me in Tallahassee that no elected officials will be on the board. You were right, Commissioner, when we first did, did the application, I specifically remember a motion being made by mayor, the last mayor, that somebody could be on the board of directors. You can't be on the board, but you can be in the membership, you can be at their meetings. The same way that board has to respond to the membership, just like this council has to respond to these, these tax people.
Well, so, no matter what, I guess.
The mayor at this meeting made firm and clear, so you can watch the video if you need to.
And council, and council did.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it came out of the mayor's mouth, like, we think he's God or something, and where he has no more authority than anyone else on this board. But, it was made very clear that the town council would oversee that in, in decision-making, basically. And, um, what was presented at the meeting at the depot, which Bill, you weren't there, which is not your problem, and you weren't there, which is not your problem, but the application was presented by Doug with, along with the great presentation of Main Street, with the understanding of, we need to elect a council for this group now, because it will make our application look better for Tallahassee. It's, it's under the understanding that it's not in stone, these people can replace it. I'm not against the people, it's just the principle of the thing that we were told and fed that we would oversee it. I can't, I'm not gonna give you money if I can't oversee it, unless it's a gift. If I give you a gift, then I, I don't expect anything in return.
And you're not bound by, you can turn it down.
Yep.
The high springs had problems with their Main Street laws. If the town is behind it and you go forward, I think you have an excellent chance to put it together, but you're not bound, Commissioner, if you don't want, just turn it down.
And on that same note, it's my understanding, and I've talked several times personally with Ruben concerning this, um, the town is in the process, not the town, but the community, the businesses, are in the process of getting a chamber of commerce here. And personally, I can't see a chamber and a Main Street being able to be successful. I think the chamber should put on these events that Main Street does, and then the town take care of the town business with some things that they do as well. They meaning we, we meaning me, and for y'all. As far as like the breakfast with Santa, I would like to see us take back the parade. I think we could do a better job with the Christmas parade, and we just, you know, work that whole day. And maybe a few other things, the yard sale twice a year, but then that opens up so many opportunities for a chamber of commerce to be involved.
So, do we...
And Otto, do you, are you involved in anything with the chamber, can you tell us anything?
That's a hearsay, I don't know anything about that, you know, I've heard rumors, just like you heard rumors, and you're talking about rumors, but, uh, as far as I know, all the businesses are on board with doing Main Street and wanna do Main Street, and understand that that's where our focus and our energy's at. Now, if the town decides to not go with Main Street, then, yeah, the businesses are gonna do whatever they wanna do, and they have the right to do whatever they wanna do.
Yes. Yes, I agree.
Do, do we want to, I guess, if we want to decide how we want to move forward with this, do we want to put this on an agenda for another meeting, or call it special meeting on this, or? Okay, I don't know.
Not a special meeting, because I mean, that's what our once a month meetings are for, is to meet about what's necessary for the town. If the well blew up, that would be a special meeting. But, um, I would like to perhaps find out more about the chamber, because I know from talking to Ruben today, that they have submitted an application. They had to change the title of the chamber name, because it was too similar to what another chamber attempt had been for Fort White, and that was just a matter of paperwork. Do we have any talk of, of fear of both of them being successful? You know, I don't want to compete with the chamber.
In the off going meeting, we were told that Fort White lost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I do not see putting twenty-five thousand dollars is something we don't run.
But yeah, for three years.
A year.
Can I clarify, we did not lose a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
In this meeting?
No. What was told in this meeting was that the budget for this coming fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, if everything is funded on the budget that was submitted to the town council that you approved and voted on, there would be a deficit of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
But would the, the council be interested in working with the chamber, some kind of financial obligation?
Well, I mean, I, right now, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what we're going to.
I mean, my wish would be, I wish you'd stick it out, it's quite an honor to have a major.
I know it's an honor, and I'm not trying, I know I'm from a cross, that's a big bad wolf, and I'm okay with that, but I'm not trying to do that. But I can't see that there's enough economic development in this town to support the two. I would love to see that happen.
The Main Street program has a forty year history, and there would be training sessions.
The Chamber of Commerce probably has several hundred years of history, minimum. I would be very happy if we look at it again, address it again, and have whoever's behind the chamber be on the agenda to, to say where they are in that process, and how they would work with us, or how they would not work with us. And I don't see them not working with us.
So you're, okay, so you're saying for next meeting, get whoever's somebody that did the paperwork for the Chamber of Commerce, they can come and talk about that.
I know that was Ruben, and I would think, um, that he would have other businesses on board, because you're not going to have a chamber of one. Don't have anything to say about that?
I thought we put dog in the funeral.
Dog like cat all night, what do you want to do?
No, no, and that's okay, we can, we can, we can put that on for the next agenda, they can come and just talk about, yeah, that's. Okay, very well.
And what, what, what we can do is concentrate on Connie signing some commencement documents today to start the improvements for Dees Park and Bryant Park, we'll go ahead and look back. So if you, if you all want to drop Main Street, you're going to have to tell them, okay?
The park improvements are totally separate from you.
But what I'm saying is, that, that will be my time commitment, I won't have anything to do with Main Street, and if you decide to continue it, I'll do that. But in my personal opinion, this town's not digging under two chambers, so one or the other's going to.
And that's an important factor, he had told me that several times, and I, I didn't want to prompt you all, wanted it to come out of your mouth, but it just did.
But Homero, please, please, it's an honor.
Thank you, okay, all right.
Thank you.
That was from Main Street.
So I'll make a motion that we do not make a decision on Main Street tonight, yet we involve the potential of a chamber, invite them to our next meeting, and discuss it in that respect.
There was a decision.
Yeah, there, so, yeah, it was, but we can do that for a next meeting.
But it puts him on notice of where we stand, and he's got a lot of hours involved and can reap, um, financial rewards for it.
Okay, so, so you're saying.
He, yes, and Doug Sanders.
I, I guess maybe just, so you're saying, so that, I'm not sure.
We, we have not accepted Main Street. We can have updates on it all along, but we still have an opening to say we are not going forward with Main Street. Or we are going forward with Main Street.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the Main Street program, is that something that we already, or the council already approved in some?
Well, we had already approved it, and that seems to keep coming back up. So thanks to.
We approved Main Street as long as we had final say.
Exactly, that's how it was.
That the, that was Wales, the mayor, Wales presented that that night. That if we didn't have the final say, we wouldn't have them do it. I mean, the board let him speak for that after we discussed it.
Did you pull the comment, Doug?
You can put up a comment.
There, there will. Or afterwards.
He just gave the presentation and we started talking about it.
Yeah, only if you vote.
Okay, so you're saying, you're making a motion to, what is it, to not, to have the final say, I guess, whether or not we'll move forward with Main Street?
Yeah, or I'll reword it again, to review whether Main Street is financially and realistically something that the town of Fort White can do. Because we invested the money, which we haven't shelled out yet, but twenty-four thousand dollars a month, plus expenses of training, so I would guess that would be about twenty-eight thousand, not a month, a year. Twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for a program that we have no control over. Plus the depot, that, it's a shame that depot is sitting there not doing anything.
I see. So we'll bring that, you're, you're making a motion so that we bring that up and discuss that at the next town council meeting, whether or not we have the funds?
Is anybody in the room understanding what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm reiterating it, is that, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, that is the motion, is there a second?
That's it.
Okay, uh, all in, all in favor? Favor, I, I'll oppose, say aye. All right. That is for number four, okay, number six, approval of consultant contracts for FRDP grants. Okay, so this is, this is a grant that we have for Dees Park, Johnnie B Bryant Park. Who we're currently, let me see, who we're currently going to go with is. Had to reach down somewhere. Oh, Andy, and Associates, okay, they will be the consultants. I guess that's what's perfect.
Mayor, you don't, you don't give a state, okay, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So whether or not we want, uh, Sam, Andy Easton and Associates to handle this, how they're going to handle this grant money, put the bids out, to make these renovations, these improvements, uh, for Dees Park and for Johnnie B Bryant Park.
I'm not talking, it's someone else's turn.
What other options do we have? For the guy, Andy Easton, for managing these.
Do they advertise it?
Oh.
Do you have to advertise it?
Go ahead, Connie.
They're the ones that applied for the grant, with the state, you know, taking the grant for us. And the grant, the, it's all paid out of the grant funding.
That was on the slideshow, was the slideshow the last meeting or the meeting before?
Maybe, I think it's the last slide, slideshow.
It showed some playground equipment and picnic benches, was that last meeting, y'all remember that?
I think it was last.
Boy, yeah, I bet you're leaving that.
Well, I'm, no, I'm not even really counting that one.
The last one.
The last regular, the November meeting, was it November, Doug, do you remember? Probably was, because you just got the approval.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, here we go, but I'm concerned of, if fifty thousand dollars minus an administrative fee is going to, you know, what will that really purchase?
It purchases.
As a teacher, I know that playground.
Yeah, all the playground equipment shown on the slideshow will be covered. And the seventy-five hundred in this, uh, agreement covers the survey, which the town will get reimbursed for the battery survey.
Thought the presiding officer had people at the podium, but maybe I'm confused.
Yeah, so if, so if you look at the actual.
Should he speak from here?
All right, Doug, are you done, or do you got anything else to say?
And was White in that proposal awesome, and all that will be covered within?
And watered to Bryant Park.
Yeah, and this is separate, but I'll still say, that basketball court, you know, just the surface alone up there is terrible. I mean, I would rather see a safe surface, and I don't, I have no idea if there's any kind of pick and choose from that equipment, anything would be a benefit. But I would think that, not because I'm a basketball player, but because that is such a multi-purpose area. And it's just asphalt, I mean, Rocky, do you know how expensive something like that would be?
Would you say the reserve?
I don't know.
I'm going to ask, so. Well, once I go ahead, Connie, you can.
Thank you.
The FERDAP grant is, the FERDAP grant was fifty thousand this year. We can apply, and our intent is to apply for this every year. So the first, this isn't a one and done deal. You can apply for this every single year in order to continue to build on what your vision is for the parks. With the first group was fifty thousand, and it was limited due to our size. But we have the ability to, to apply for this every single year. Now, can we guarantee that we're going to be able to do X, Y, Z all the way? It's going to depend on the bids that come in. We only have X amount of dollars. And there was a community focus group that got together, had a meeting, and voted on the items that were put into the grant to request the money. Now, can we do all of it? We hope so. Is it a hundred percent guarantee we're going to be able to do all of it? No, because this was done over a year ago, and as everybody knows, prices change, prices go up. We will present the bids to the town council for the various items, and then it will have to be, the bids will have to be approved, and we will go from there. And we will continue to apply for more FERDAP grant money, to continue to improve the parks.
Who was on the, uh, like that committee, who was on that? Did you ever?
Ronnie Jackson, Marilyn Frazier, Kevin Johnson, um, and I can't remember the, it was over a year ago. Those are the three that come to my mind right now, but yes, we had a community group, and it was advertising the newspaper, everything.
Is Kevin Johnson a community member? Because I, I don't even know, that's the only name I.
It doesn't have to be in the county area.
Okay, but I would, I would suggest in the future that we have community members from our town or the surrounding area, since that's what's going to affect the most. Rocky, I, I'm not the presiding officer, but.
Yeah, you know.
I, I was just going to say.
Can we have him at the lecture, if I can get him to leave, please?
It was a question brought up about, right, all I know is, the part of playground equipment goes, we just replaced playground equipment at the community center, the centerpiece, it's the centerpiece. Those eighty thousand dollars. Eighty thousand, so. I was in the meeting the other night also, when the presentation was made. We had picnic tables, we had playground equipment. I, I don't, I, I'm not saying you can't do it, but I don't know how you can do it for fifty thousand. And I will say also, as far as FERDAP grant goes, for years, the county applied for those grants for Fort White for free, didn't charge it down, for, 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 for a private grant for Fort White.
Is that something that the county can do in the future?
Do it all the time for them. And we usually do it for Fort White. And also North Florida Professional Services has applied for grants for Fort White. At, for that, but that part of the work that was done at the Train Depot, as far as the sign, it's Mary Park, you know, was done by North Florida Professional Services. And I'm not going to say you may know that.
So when you say through the county, that means through North Florida Professional Services would do it?
So why not?
When you say, when you say through the county, you mean.
No, I think both would do it. Both, both have applied for grants for Fort White and Red Yol.
And which would eliminate consultant fees.
Exactly.
And when, when you're saying the county, you're saying that our tax dollars that go to the county. Yeah. So it wouldn't, it's not really.
And Fort White would get one hundred percent of the grant, just in Fort White.
And this, this is kind of unrelated, but I was hung up on how horrible that basketball court was. Could that be something that comes under, and probably not, Department of Transportation because of asphalt?
Not Department of Transportation, but it could come under a FERDAP grant, or, you know, there's, there's other grants you can apply for. If we apply for it for Richardson, we've got, you know, we've just done all the basketball.
Richardson's great.
We've done all those basketball courts in Richardson. Um, I guess what I'm saying is, the county is here for the town, if y'all need. You've just got to ask, we've got to do that.
If we use, okay, so it'll be free, and it'll be bid out, the same way, like it'll go to the local.
So we, if we, a lot of times when we get the grants, we handle the bidding, we, we handle the inspection, overseeing the project. We've done it for years for White.
Would it automatically, I guess what I'm saying, because I remember when we had, you, you had brought this to me, the, the last time we spoke, you had brought this up, I think. So correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm asking, if we do it through the county and or North Florida Professional Services, they would be the company who get the work, or are you saying so it still gets bid out, or how does that?
Work will still be bid out.
It will get bid out, okay.
The work gets bid out no matter what, you can't, the county, any municipality can't just assign a project to somebody unless, unless.
Has to be bid out.
Unless they're the only ones providing that service. Everything else is bid out.
So you probably just answered it, but can the county complete this current, um, grant that we have? Or y'all would have to start from scratch?
I'm not a grant writer, because we have people do that.
But I mean, I mean, complete as in, we give you the opportunity to get the bids and follow through on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we could do that, yes, yes, we can administrate.
Yeah, free of charge.
We, uh, yeah, free, well, I mean, we've just done Jordan Street, you know, we did, we do all the roads down, we found. So, you know, uh, we've done it for years for White. And by, by, we've also covered, we've also covered overages out of county funds, too, for White. We just done it with Jordan Street, fifty something thousand dollars, if I recall, was the number, amount we just spent on Jordan Street, finishing that project. So, yeah.
And it would, we, I mean, we, we got the grant money, right, that wouldn't, if we switch, that would jeopardize the grant money, we would keep it.
That's what I, that's what I just asked.
That's, that's what it is.
It would actually save us fifteen thousand dollars of that hundred thousand dollars that we could put into the seesaw or the basketball court. I think that's what I could, I'm going to use that as a segue to talk about again, rebuilding this relationship between the county and the town of Fort White, because that's another feud that we had going on, that I was not a part of the feud, I was not a part of the collective feud, but it appears to be my fault entirely. But I think that we should get Rocky involved in as much as possible to bring the county to help service Fort White. Who in their right mind would pay fifteen thousand dollars when he's doing it for free? Not him personally, but the county has done those grants forever.
Okay, so.
Anybody hear that?
We'll confirm, yeah, so we're, I guess, item number five, now we're at six. It is open for a motion, whichever way, whichever way it goes. Prove it as is, I guess you're saying, or we have the option of switching to.
I'll make a motion to, to give it to the county, to have them complete. Because it's a savings of fifteen thousand dollars, it's an opportunity to begin to have a better relationship with the county. We've gone back and forth about the water and the dump truck and the backhoe, whatever that country equipment is.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second?
That's it.
Okay, all in favor of not using Andy Easton going over with the county, say aye?
Aye.
Well, I'll oppose, say aye. Okay. Oppose, say nay. Okay. Which number, that was approved. And moving on to seven, public meeting, second reading of CRA, the CRA ordinance. Yeah, so we did this one last time. It's a community redevelopment area. We did the first reading last time. Second read now. I spoke to Commissioner Ford, I spoke to David Crowe. There may be, I followed up with them, they haven't got back yet, but there may be something that we have to amend here that, it was something along, and I'm waiting for them to give back to us finally, but something along the lines of maybe the parcel, one of the, one or some of the parcel numbers may not match up to what's in the map. So just FYI, if we approve it right now, it may come back, we may have to amend some of the, either the map or the parcel numbers to match what's in the map. I don't know what's explicitly wrong with it, I just-
Mayor, I would, I would suggest you, you should ask those questions to the county attorney. I'm not that adept on the main, or the-
Yeah, and I did, I followed up.
Yeah, I was just telling you that I was told there was some issues with the property idea.
Yeah, David.
Yeah. And where the, where does the CRA with that?
I don't, I don't know that it makes sense to hold it up. This is the second reading. If we need to amend it, based on what either the county attorney or David Crowe puts back to us with, we can amend it. I don't know that it makes sense to necessarily hold it up, but-
Is that something we should also consider not going forward with, because it takes funds from the county where if they're willing to do these things for us, why not take advantage of it? Am I, and maybe I'm not understanding that correctly, but it's my understanding that the CRA is going to make us more independent, yet it limits us with things that we can do with the county. And the county, no matter what or when, is going to be stronger than us. And we obviously have Rocky as the District Two County Commissioner wanting our county, his portion of the county, his district to benefit.
So you're, you're-
Rocky doesn't, am I saying anything that makes any sense?
My understanding of the CRA is basically whatever the taxes are right now on a parcel in the future, if that, if that value of that parcel goes up and the taxes increase, those increases will go to the town of Fort White. I'm not that adept on the CRA, so that's my understanding of it. I don't know how that will affect exactly the county and the, and the town, but I do know from what I understand of it, that the town will receive that money in the CRA district, yes, in the CRA.
Okay, but would the county have previously received that money?
Yes.
Okay, so I just don't know if, if that's building another wall rather than building a bridge.
Well, the only thing I will say I do know is our relationship with the city of Lake City, which they have their own abdominal tax, they have CRA, CRA district. They're more independent from the county, the city of Lake City. We don't do for the city of Lake City what we do in Fort White. I do do that. Now, Fort White is a lot smaller than the city of Lake City. Y'all don't have the taxes right now, y'all don't tax. You know, it is our responsibility to help Fort White as much as we can and through the years, I think we have. I mean, you know, so will it affect it? I don't know how much or how, but, you know, I'm sure it will affect it some, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So as far as affecting, I'm not, I guess, what, what would it affect? CRA program is a, I think it's statewide, right? So the whole, anyone who's in a designated community redevelopment area, any locality can apply for this statewide and it's tax money that's going to the county, sure enough, that's paid by the residents of Fort White. And so all we would do is we, we would still pay them that baseline amount, but any increase in the assessed value, we would just keep for the residents of Fort White. That, that's how that is. So I guess I'm not, I don't think that would affect our relationship-
Well, that increased value, from, from that point, the increased value would have gone to the county, but instead, so, so the county would lose money. They would lose that future money.
Right. And Fort White would keep it.
I think I asked Doug this in November. Don't the county have to approve this?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think Doug was going to make a presentation for it. Is that correct, Doug?
I've done it in the past. There's an interlocal agreement. If this is passed tonight, then an interlocal agreement, because Columbia County is a charter county, that interlocal agreement would have to be entered into between the county and the city.
And, and I don't know that much about it, other than it would take money from the county. So I just, saying it again, I don't want to put up a wall. I'd rather build a bridge.
Right, yeah, I agree. I don't, yeah, look, I don't, I guess I just don't see how-
Maybe not kill it, but delay this until we can figure out a little more on this. If county's got to approve it, why would the county approve this?
So let's let, let's let that make its age. And I don't say we make the farm, right? I mean, this is, it, it's true, it's money that would have been going to the county, but let's not do aside the fact that it would stay in Fort White. I mean, to me, that's a, that's a one win. I, I would say. So, again, I'm not, I'm not seeing how that would put up a wall with the county. It's, it's, it's a, it's a state, it's a state of foreign program.
By, by, if that money comes in, and I'm, I'm for it, I just want to make sure that doesn't in the future delay or knock out where we need this road development. The county say, oh, we're not going to do it because you can use your CRA funds. And I don't even know if a road would fall under it. I don't know exactly what falls under it. Do you understand my point, Doug?
Yeah, yeah.
Because the county could respond. Y'all will do that as a CRA holder, and I'm sure that's not the word, but it might be something that we cannot do that the county would do. Do you follow what I'm saying or do you?
Ms. Catherine, from what I understand, this money has to be used for lighting communities.
Right, this is-
And does the Columbia camp on your end, y'all have a blighted-
Yeah, I say, I mean, I don't, again, I-
I want to make a motion.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve. The, the second, the second reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash eleven.
Okay, second?
What was the motion then, to approve it?
For approve.
And then the county still has to approve.
They have to, right, they, uh, right. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yep, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. All right, ordinance number twenty-four dash eleven is approved. Moving on to item, item number eight. This is for, I believe, yeah, the million dollars we got in grant money to put the loops here in Fort White. So I think people probably familiar with, there are certain neighborhoods, certain areas where the water loops, they get in. Doesn't matter how clean the water is, if you stack it there and if it's not moving around, it's gonna, it's gonna be lower quality water. So we've got to approve of this grant, we've got the million dollars of it. This is to approve the North Florida Professional Services to be the consultants that we use to bid it out, make the, make some sort of design, engineering, so that will be going through NFTS. Yeah. For, for the water loops over. Floor's open for a motion on whether you want to approve that or if there's-
And how does that affect the water from the county versus us drilling a hole in the ground?
So if the, oh, the loops, still the loop, which is, the service has a, the ground is off the well, right, maybe later the service is off the, off the county's water, but the loop is still the loop.
And we have that grant in our possession and go forward?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this week, what, what was it? I believe if the, if I'm, if I'm getting it right, the grant is we, we essentially kind of build the statement they-
The grant's been awarded and to the town for the completion of the water loops. The two water loops have been designed by North Florida Professional Services. This is their task order to give them the authority and pay, and agree to pay them a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the bidding, contractor selection, project management, and the final design of the project, oversee the project. The grant is funded, or is a reimbursement grant. So you would send in invoices that you paid and get reimbursed.
Okay, that's, so that, that's, that's how that would work.
Yes.
Floor's open for a motion if we-
Mr. Ford.
Oh, yes, 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 go ahead, yeah, go, go.
I was just going to add that this, if I'm not mistaken, is a legislation, legislative appropriations plan. And I just want to add that, there again, the county wrote this grant and applied for it with legislature. We get this grant approved, Scott, done it with the county. So, again, we, we do help it, we do help it now for white.
All right, floor's open for a motion on if we want to approve this. And the water loops, regardless of where the water comes from, they got to float the pipes on the gates to everyone here in Fort White, so.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the water loops.
All in favor of using North Florida Professional Services to work on the loop improvement, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, say nay. Very well. Passes. Number nine. Okay. So we still have some money, I believe probably we got about seventy-five thousand. So we still have about seventy-five thousand that we can use for the water plant that we haven't used yet. So there are some proposed ways we can use it here. I'll, okay, look.
Let me ask a question. This is just short of your time.
Yeah.
One of Ron's last meetings that he was here, we were talking about going deeper or something with that well. Did that actually happen or is that-
In the process.
Okay, this is separate from it then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there weren't, okay.
Is that what brought the season, um, the season-
Yes, yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it. But, yeah, so apparently as this, we have, we have seventy-five thousand dollars of grant money that I guess if we don't spend it by the end of the year, we're going to lose it. One of the proposed ways we can use it here, so if you look at, so, so there's car, so one of the filter filtration systems there in the water, in the Fort White water plant has carbon that I think it was good for six months. It was supposed to have been replaced approximately six months. That was two thousand and twenty-two. So a lot of people had issues with coloration. So one of the ways we could use that money is for a color removing carbon. Costs twenty-two thousand for the actual material and right thirteen, just under fourteen thousand to actually have it installed there, the filtration system. So that's what, that's what this is here. Do we want to approve? Do we want to have new carbon and a better filtration system there that removes some of the coloration? It's, it's old carbon right now. It's grant money we're going to send it back. We don't use it.
Now, it's just- Why are we messing with a system that Columbia County is running? We've already, I mean, we got more to discuss.
Right.
But why would we do this?
Because we can't spend it on nothing else.
Well, I guess why would we do this? The county, county runs that system right there. We don't, we don't have a right to go in there and do this.
Yeah, and-
In my opinion.
The discoloration does not affect the safety. And the meeting that was held at the community center, and we change our minds a lot, so, you know, we can still change our minds, but that was the motive behind that meeting, is to get the community to cash their vote to the mayor at that time, so that we as a council could try to go with what the community wants, since they're the recipients of it. And so it sounds like, and I voted yay to the torpedo of going down, you know, but, and Ronnie even sat there, I'm not trying to discount Ronnie, but he said, well, we gotta use the money or we'll lose it. But we don't want to just ride down the road and throw it out the window to use it. And we don't need to use it on something that is not going to affect the water if we go with the county. And it was already decided through vote, and again, we go back and forth, but it was decided through vote at that meeting down there, which was what, county October meeting?
September.
September? Okay, that, you know, the community wanted to go with the county. And the county's ready to like turn it on, to go to on.
So as far as what we do with the grant money then?
Unused grant money would go back unless the county could, I don't know if we have the ability to give that money to the county with the-
I don't think that works that way.
Rocky, can you answer that? Because I don't know. Can you answer that?
Yes, I'm going to get you.
Okay. But there's no reason to just do something dumb with it.
Well, I mean, I think improving the quality of the water, even if it's only for a month, even if it turned on a month later. I mean, I guess how else would we use it?
We don't have to use it.
We would have, I mean, I'd make an agreement with the county for something that needs to be done to better the water system.
There you go.
That's what I was thinking.
So you're saying, okay, so-
Why are you sitting there playing?
So, okay, so it would have, do we want to allot? The only thing is, I guess, if the town council has to vote on how we use the funds and, you know, use them from now to the new year.
Consult the county, is that what you-
Right. But who, so, but who has authorization over who can approve the use of, of the grant or the funds? That's, that's the thing.
We won't have another meeting before the first year, twenty-second.
Right, 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 right.
But-
Could I comment?
If you come up to the podium, you can.
All right, I think you-
More exercise than we've got in the year.
No, Saturday he ran himself crazy.
So, so by understanding, talking to the county manager, that we could invoice y'all for that, for use on your water system here in Fort White, which could be looping the lines, could go over the million dollars, so that, because there's a shortfall in this project, we're going to probably, we're going to help y'all with it. So if, if you, and I don't know exactly the whole process, but we can invoice the county for water, or county can invoice county Fort White, and that money could be spent on the water system in Fort White. And from my understanding, we could go ahead and invoice it before the end of December. And as long as you have that money assigned to a project, you don't have to get back. We can spend it on the water system here in Fort White. Whether that be looping system, whether that pop off valve, we need pop offs, but you don't have the looping system right now. I mean, there's, there's always plenty to use for money on a, on a public supply.
So how-
And North Florida's here, they might can help you with some props, some ways to use that money.
And how would we make a motion to, to do it that way?
Uh-
Should I ask?
Yeah. I'm sorry. The motion board is already there and they're going to invoice us for, for our services.
But I mean, are we motioning that we go with the county's suggestion? I put my foot in my mouth a lot today.
I think I would let go floor comment on it before, before you make, remind, he might-
I'm not charging you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Laverne. First of all, this is a decision that y'all made. And if you want to, to work with the county to find a way to spend this money in a way that's legal and proper, between now and the end of the year, you can do that. I don't think, I think maybe we're overthinking how that has to be framed. I think that the council can approve the expenditure of these funds in coordination with the, with the county on the water system as legal, under the grant, et cetera, et cetera, with an on the record agreement of that it's going to be a decision between, you know, and I'm not a water guy, but your water operator and your engineer, et cetera. And nobody's going to complain about what that is. I mean, if they decide to use it on, you know, a, a, a filter, then it's a filter. If they decide to use it on something else- If they decide to use it on something else, it's gonna be something else. But you can, you can approve the expenditure of the funds, you know, via the, via the council to the county.
So, and then we would just, we would just give final approval, basically final approval authority of how the funds are spent to...
To, to who's running, who's running, who's the water person for, who's running our water now?
Two, twofold water engineering, okay.
Twofold water?
The county's over the water system.
But, but the county, well, they're, yeah, they're right, but the county's paying.
I'm just, what I'm trying to do is give you guys a solution, okay? There's no more meeting between now and the end of the year. If you wanna spend seventy-five thousand dollars, then you've gotta say, "We're gonna spend seventy-five thousand dollars and, and we're gonna trust the people that we employ to spend seventy-five thousand dollars on the, on, on the appropriate thing." That's, that's the best answer I can do.
I like the wording you said, in coordination with the county.
Other than that, again, they would have to come up with Plan, with Plan A, and then we'd have to come back every other week and say, "Yes, we agree with Plan A." Or you can say that we're, we're authorizing the expenditure. Or you can say, "No, we don't authorize it and send the money back."
So the water operator right now is employed by the county. I guess that's kosher, if we empower them to...
The water operator is employed by the county and the interlocal that we have with the county to operate the water system, correct Connie? Am I wrong? All this water stuff is, the water, whatever, is, is a little bit over me at this point, but, but that's my understanding, correct? Twofold is...
Twofold is the operator of record.
Of record, they are a private company.
They are a private company.
Employed by the county.
Yes.
Subject to the interlocal that we have with the county to operate our water system.
Correct.
So twofold is our agent, okay? Our agent, they're also the county's agent, so they have fiduciary of us, just as they do to the county. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so we can motion to allow the twofold water, we can say the operator of record, I guess, or...
Go straight to the county.
Yeah.
I would say the county, if we got twofold, it's with the county.
Did we want to...
The county. The county.
Or is that a separate agenda item?
We're just, we're just either, we're gonna throw the money away or we're gonna give it to the county. One of the other has to happen.
Well, I mean, we...
Or, or we could do this.
Right, or, I mean, yeah, we could replace the carbon, but...
I thought we give it to the county.
I would like to hear what he's got to say before we move on to anything.
Oh, okay.
She's representing, plus, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Kentucky Commission, my name is Trevor Wallace, I'm a Florida Professional Services as a project manager. As far as how the town chooses to spend their ARP funds, I'm going to echo with Mr. Lindson Anderson. And that, that is ultimately going to be what's legal and what's allowed. As far as can you add this to a grant that's already been funded through legislative appropriation? It's not just additive like that. I, I would, I would encourage you to listen to the advice of your, your town attorney and go through all the proper channels to make sure that the money's spent in the correct way. We, we can help however on the other side of this, but in the, in the meantime, that's, that's a decision that's ultimately gonna be the town's with consideration here, Connie.
Very well, so if that, you know, so the floor is open for a motion, but I guess I would just say, if we go down the primary route, if the money isn't spent by a certain date, do we want...
Can we get rid of it? We don't have any control of it.
Or do we, well, we, like, we can make a motion and say, "Hey, this person, Connie, whoever, they can authorize how it's used." So they have at least a few days before the new year to expend, expend the funds, just so we don't send back the seventy-five. My thing is, I just don't see what the point is sending back if the county can say...
I don't think this Connie can authorize, once we give it to the county and let them do whatever they're gonna do, that's, that's it. Like, there's no other authorization needed.
I agree.
We're, okay.
Does that follow your legal...
Well, we're not giving it to the county.
Right.
We're not giving it to the county. What we're saying is, we're spending the money. You're authorizing, you know, I really think we're all, you're authorizing the expenditure of the funds. I think that wording is that we're authorizing the expenditure of the funds on the advice of our, our agent, Twofold, who says, "Here's what you need in your water system for these funds to be spent on." We do it, so the authorization comes from the council, you know? And, and the money, the actual dollar or the actual item or service or whatever can be, it gets to by, by Twofold who, or for the council, we're giving it to the county. Listen, I just noticed that we don't wanna, we don't wanna circumvent anything in the, in the grant stuff.
Yeah, and, and when I say giving it, and I think, I'm kinda talking for you now, so interject if I'm wrong, that's just giving them the authorization to put it where it needs to be done under Twofold versus die to water.
I don't, I don't think so. Okay, floor is open for a motion on the remaining water grant money?
I make a motion that we authorize our agent Twofold to recommend...
What's needed?
Expenditure.
Expenditure.
I've been into this motion already. I make a motion that we authorize the county, along with our agent Twofold, to...
Allocate those...
Allocate the remaining ARP funds, is that what it, what it is?
Yeah.
For use, we gotta make up our water system.
My second.
A third.
All right, all in favor of authorizing Twofold and the county to use our remaining water ARP grant money, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? I'll say nay.
Jason, you were nay?
I said nay.
You were nay?
I was nay.
Okay. Just one nay.
All right, where are we at? So, reversion agreement, okay. So after the last meeting, I spoke to, I spoke to our county commissioner, I spoke to the county manager, David Kraus. I, in conjunction with the attorney and Mr. Bakine, we came up with two potential agreements that we can send to the county, basically to see if they'll pretty much approve them. In speaking with David Kraus, his understanding was that the main, really, really the main concern the county had was they wanna be able to use the equipment. They wanna be able to use our equipment here, if it's in, like, the locals, the Fort White area, so they don't have to tow the equipment from Lake City or here or there, or wherever else the county may have equipment. So I reworded the agreement, if you go to, I think it's the second one, and look under... Ownership, no, it's the first, sorry, first one, at least in my back. And look under ownership, it just says, "Town agrees to allow the county to use equipment on a temporary basis if the county needed." Then we'll kind of read the rest there, but, to me, this agreement is more favorable to the town of Fort White just because we finally get to actually keep the equipment and then we can just, you know, on good faith, lend it out to the county if and whatever the county needs it here on the area.
I think we should give them a clarification of the water. We can go back and tuck with this water.
That's the, that's the next, that's the next one.
Well, we should talk about that before we talk about this, in my opinion. Your equipment's tied to the water.
The, the, the equipment, the equipment is tied to the water potentially, now. There's nothing in writing, right, that's the whole problem, right? There's nothing in writing that says that it is what it is, so...
Well, this totally resolved that issue with the equipment, so we don't have to go back and use the equipment with the water.
If the county uses it.
If, yeah, ultimately they have to, you know, they have to agree with it. Speaking of David Kraus, that, he, now, he doesn't speak for the board of county commissioners, but he's under the impression that, hey, if we let them use it around here, and it's a local area, that's the main thing, really, that's what their concern is, like, that way they don't gotta be, you know, driving a dump truck or a backhoe from Lake City or whatever other part of the county where they may have it. And we in good faith would allow them to use it, so...
Who's gonna be responsible for the repairs if something happens?
That's in there too.
They have to fix it if they're...
Yeah, county agrees to be responsible where they're in, that's preferred, you go to, like, seventy-five, but...
I think the county should be in charge of the water and the judgment of where the dump truck and the backhoe go.
Wait, why, why wouldn't we want Fort White to be in charge of where, where it go, and they may very well...
Because that's been part of the hostility of this water. I've sat here over and over, listening to a fight about the dump truck and the backhoe. And it's been sitting out there for months, and then it was used illegally without license or license plate or insurance or title to, um...
It's legally used, it's insured by the county, they have a lot of to use it. I mean, it's being legally used right now, it's not, it's not being held up right now. It's just a matter of final ownership and who holds the title.
Does it have a tag?
Does it have a tag on it?
Ah, the back, I don't know if that backhoe's have a tag.
The truck.
Oh, the, the dump truck? I don't know.
It does not.
No.
Oh, very well.
Truck does not have insurance to be on the road. We use it to haul, I don't know how much debris he leaves in his, in the water.
And I know...
It has insurance, I mean, it's insured by the county.
Okay, it was insured by tag.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, I just want that highway, you cannot.
My, and I didn't include here, but my understanding, speaking from David Kraus, is that it was all the shirt and kosher for use.
That's what...
That was, that, that...
We had written approval from David Kraus giving us permission to use it.
Right, so that, I mean, that much has been established and we have any...
That's coming up in court, it's my good feeling.
I think you can...
Well, luckily that one was, and we're trying to resolve it, so... There's no bigger only go hole here.
Please, right, and, and, you know, and if we send this to the, I guess I would just, you know, I, I don't see this as hostility, it's...
Hold on. Come on.
Let me just get through it.
And I am remedial.
Let me get through it, let, what, let me get through it, please. So, I don't, I don't see this necessarily really as hostility. Again, like I say, I spoke to David Kraus, I spoke to Commissioner Ford. They say the county is willing to work with us. Why, I guess I just don't see why we wouldn't approve this, to send it to the Board of Commissioners, to see whether, they may very, I mean, let's not say no for them. If they say no, then we're back to the reversion agreement and we signed it, you know, I mean...
They've said all along that they're willing to work with us. The battle was between, it was, it was really between our town's former mayor and the county. And I missed this too, but apparently there was a big, potentially close to being a knockdown drag out, and that's what brought our deputy at the next meeting, which I would suggest we just miss him and let this be his final meeting.
No.
And nobody left...
One second, one second, one second, one second. Would you like to, would you like to be recognized?
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead, too.
Who are you?
I'm Stu Wilber, I mean, sixty-eight miles down the road. Anybody here that knows today, what happened in Wisconsin? His deputy or whatever deputy comes from the sheriff sits in the back of the room and protects everybody. Protects them from the time, and before, I guess, he gets here early, I know, for a long time. But it could be any deputy. Pays attention to the room, he pays attention to the people that come in here. I remind this Ford that they had a resident in Lake City who came into those meetings packing a gun. In contravention to state law, can't bring a gun to the meetings. And nobody said anything for months. When they finally noticed the gun, they just asked him to walk out and never even saw if the gun was licensed. You need a deputy at the school board meetings and any public meeting now, you need a deputy. That's ill-founded, and I've asked you to reconsider that, I understand you, shoot from the hip a little bit. But we don't want somebody to come in here and shoot from the hip or attempt to, without a man who's trained in dealing with those kind of situations. I have just respect, we're asking the board to not act hastily on this. The deputy's protect everybody, and today, everybody is protection, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. So that, and that's not on the agenda, so we will not be going on that tonight, one way or the other. However, as far as this agreement, I don't, I don't see, I guess I just don't see what we have to lose if we just send it to the county commissioners. I mean, we can approve, we can even approve both of them. One of them says specifically, if Columbia County, Florida and the town of Fort White, Florida enter into a joint utility authority, the town shall cause to be executed, executed such titles or other instruments as may be necessary, et cetera, et cetera, so it'll go back to Leta, but in the meantime, it belongs to, to the town of Fort White. I mean, we can even approve them both, send them both to the county commissioners and see what they... But i- i- if the whole thing is based on the, on the utility authority, so I wrote one up that's based on the utility authority. Yeah, I mean, you just approve them both and send them and... So what the county has been, has been wanting, so I, that's just in the agreement. So that, I guess the floor is open for a motion to approve one or either or both or...
I'll make a motion to send them both to the county.
Okay, do we have a second? A second? We'll do a, well, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Okay, all opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Eyes have it, we'll approve both, we'll send it to the county and hopefully get approval on at least one of them. All right, last one. Oh, eleven. Meeting results with D E P?
No, January meeting day.
Oh, yes, 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 I'll believe it. Item number eleven. The January meeting day. I believe is currently scheduled to fall on holiday, let me see what holiday is.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King Day. So, would, I guess, I mean, do we wanna reschedule that for another day, last day, the second day?
Um, did you happen to look and see when you'd be available?
Oh, I can, I can meet that Wednesday, if you wanna do it on Wednesday, that school board meeting on the sixth, on the third Tuesday. So I can meet on that Wednesday. I can meet, I mean, can you guys tell me when there's an alternate time here, like, and I can tell you if I'm gonna do it.
With Monday before, with Monday after, if you mind.
Yeah. But, can you, you know, if you can do the twenty-seventh, um... Yeah.
Our normal meeting day is the twentieth. So you're available on the twenty-second, is that correct?
Oh, I have to get to it.
Well, because the floor is saying we can keep it on a Monday, so if you can do the, the next Monday, that twenty-seventh? So you gotta do that.
Because that'd be the fourth Monday of the month, or across city.
We used to have our meetings on the fourth Monday and we moved them, so that...
Because, oh, because of that, so...
I, I have a second Monday. The, no, I have second and fourth, across city, twice a month, across city means twice a month. So I have the, um, well, the first Monday of the month is, is January first, that doesn't... Or no, that's actually a fall on Wednesday, actually. Um... Nobody wants to be on Wednesday?
We could, yeah, go ahead, I'll write down the availability, then we'll...
I, I mean, we can do it pretty much any Wednesday. I never had meetings on Wednesday.
That affects your board.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Well, I mean, or a Thursday. The only Thursday I'm not available is the second Thursday after our deputy, on the second Thursday.
I guess it, it, it's picking, the, what is it, twenty-second, January twenty-second, is that Wednesday?
Yes.
So, uh, floor is open for a motion, but I... So, uh, floor is open for a motion to make the town council meeting instead of that January twentieth, it will move to the twenty second. Do I just need a motion for that date?
I'll make a motion for the meeting to be changed to Wednesday, the twenty second. With respect, Martin Luther King Day, on the twenty first.
All right, we have a second. Second. All right, all, all in favor of the January meeting date being, uh, moved from the twentieth to the twenty second, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed say nay. All right, very well. New meeting date for January is the twenty second. Okay, now the last slide.
Before we have two more, or is it all?
Well, yeah, yeah, it's all.
Well, there's a task Monday. Bill made a suggestion of adding a item.
We already have a package.
Before the citizen comment, to add an item for council comment. And it's not on here because we, you know, we had already gotten the package, but do you want to exercise that or bang your gavel and say no one talks?
We, yeah, so you're asking for comment, right, I guess, just council comment?
Count, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's also my understanding, and not necessarily a vote, but a council person can bring anything to the table to talk about.
Why, what's the agenda, now, what's the agenda set, the agenda set? According to the rules.
So I'd, I'd like to review the breakfast with Santa, just real quick, and Connie's got doggy.
We still got one more thing.
Yeah, what, yeah, go ahead.
And then I'll read the death that goes with that.
Okay, DEP results, uh, and the cease and desist letter, so I guess the cease and desist letter may be a little more clear cut. We, I think council member, or county floor, she brought it up, the, uh, council had voted to dig the well deeper and check to see if there's clean water. And so we did that, or I guess we're in the process of doing that, uh, the county found out and they said, hey, stop doing that, you're in violation of the interlocal agreement, don't, don't do that anymore. That's, and so, and just for FYI, it's important that the, the town council be aware of that. So that's that. Now, as far as the DEP meeting went, so the last results that were pulled off of the Fort Whitewater plant, uh, when the water results came back, the water was clean. Last results that were pulled for Ellisville, this is back in September, the water was dirty. They were outside of the maximum contaminant levels for, uh, for the disinfection by products. Uh, that's where the Ellisville water, I guess they had one of their wells collapsed or so, they're in the process of their drilling new well. So as of the last one, the water's not safe, that's per DEP. So, yeah, so that's how that went. Additionally, there, and I think, I guess supposedly the county is working on permitting for it, another concern, but another concern that the, forgot who was the program manager, the director, who was there at DEP, had was the capacity of the Ellisville water, forgot who was specifically with the water plant or with the wells, to absorb all of the new demand that would just be switched on overnight here with Fort Whitewater plant. So that was one of the things we went over, that was the other one, and there was one more.
What did they have to say about the capacity? They're concerned, was there a, a resolution, was there an ending to that? Or was it just a blanket statement, we're concerned?
Hey, we're concerned, the county said, hey, we're working on permitting to increase the capacity. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. Now, what, what I recommend is that, so ba- based on the research that I've been doing, based on the fact that the Fort Whitewater is now clean, uh, and, and this, this is in accordance with every agreement that we have, in accordance with the interlocal, uh, there's another plan referenced there in the interlocal, which is the Asset Management and Fiscal Sustainability Plan that we have, that was done by the North, the Florida Water Association, I'm sorry. The primary plan was always to get the water clean here at Fort White. The water's clean. It says it, you know, it says it in that agreement that the bringing in the water from Ellisville is a supplement. Uh, you know, it was dirty in September, it will very likely, it'll probably be clean here. I, I would ask that we at least wait for the clean results, at least. Really what I would ask is that we request from the county sixty days, we have one last meeting, we put it to bed once and for all. Now we have a new development, Fort Whitewater's clean. It's clean, so me personally, I would bring it up to the town residents and allow them to make a decision.
We did that at the community center.
Back then it wasn't made known to the residents that the water was clean, their main concern was, hey, we don't, we don't have clean water, we want to go to Ellisville. Last results that came up, Ellisville water, dirty, Fort Whitewater was clean.
I'm not an expert on the water, but I think it has to do with the water table and the drainage and whatnot, as Bill was.
It doesn't, it doesn't. It doesn't.
It does.
Okay, per DEP it doesn't, so, was outside of the maximum contaminant levels for disinfection by product. That has nothing to do with the water table. That's per DEP.
The water table kind of regulates water, particularly in the state of Florida, that's what their sinkholes are or pollutants from.
That's what the Florida Department.
Environmental problems.
That's what the Florida Department have embarked on the protection side, so, I, I, I'm going to lean on their understanding of that. Uh, and, and just so, this may have been gone over, but the Ellisville plant, how they currently treat their water is with chloramines. The Fort Whitewater had not been using chloramines, we had been using a different treatment system. We switched in late June over to chloramines. Ever since, ever since we switched over to chloramines, our water has been just as clean as the Ellisville water. And the reports show that. All I'm saying is, hey, we're not going to vote right now whether or not we want to take back the water. I do think this is information the town residents need to have the final decision on, based on this recent development. The other, well, I'll try to stick to the agenda, but, yeah, so, so, so there's that, so, yeah. So what, what I am proposing to the council as a suggestion, as a recommendation, is that we were, and, and, and to be fair, I, I spoke, I spoke to, uh, Commissioner Ford very openly and honestly, I gave him, you know, all this information, he, well, he, his position is that the Board of County Commissioners just wants Fort White to have clean water. And it's that we can get it on our own and manage it responsibly, but the Board of County Commissioners will turn it over to us. So, I'm not saying we make that decision right now, I'm just saying, present it to the people. The reports are there. I, I got the, the financial breakdown, I got the fiscal breakdown of how the county's saying they're not making money. Long story short, there is money to be made on the water plant, in addition to all the grant money that comes with it. And again, I'm not, I'm not asking for a decision right now, I guess what I'm asking for right now, I don't leave that.
Mayor, if I can speak for myself, since you're speaking for me, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, one, one second.
Yeah.
You can, you can go ahead, you can go ahead, Mr. Lucker. What I am requesting is that we just make a formal request to the Board of County Commissioners and say, hey, we request that you hold off on the Ellisville water until, you know, sixty days or until the first of March, until we can hold a special meeting on the water and let the residents decide. That, that, that's all I'm saying. Put, put it to bed. Put it to bed with the most relevant and the most current information. Financial information, disinfection by product, et cetera, safety information, that's all I'm saying. Go ahead, Mr. Lucker.
As Mayor said, me and him did have a talk on my front porch. What I told him was, we have an interlocal agreement with the town, that either side can do away with that local, interlocal agreement, anytime they want to. We can't hold the water from Fort White, Fort White can't, you know, if they want to take it over, they can take it over, that's no problem. What I said was, at least get a water rate from the county before you make a decision. Because you might be able to buy water a lot cheaper than you can produce water at, at that water plant. And if you're buying water from the county, it's already treated, coming into Fort White, you know exactly what your cost is, there's no surprise. You don't have a tank going down, you don't have something tearing up at that plant that's going to cost forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. All you got to do, collect for the water and pay the county for the water. You know exactly what the transaction is every month, there's no surprise. That's what I suggested to, to the mayor. But at the same time, there is no money running the water. And if there is any money, it should be invested back into that utility. When, when, when the county took the water over from the town, the generator was in disrepair, would not work, would not run, we got a generator temporarily from Florida Roll Water rented it till we could approve the funds to buy a new generator. The county has put a new generator in, we re, basically redone the whole plant, we spent a lot of money on the plant, town spent a lot of money on the plant. Uh, but at the same time, if the town would put that money back and done repairs and maintenance for that twenty years, they wouldn't have been stuck with this big bill all at one time. And my thing is, the town should not take the water over on the premise that they're going to make money off of. That's unfair to the residents of the town, and that's unfair to the utility. The utility should be extended longer, it should not be part of funding the general funds for the county of Fort White. Nobody could. And second of all, we're in a drought, I'm just going to say it. When it starts raining and we start having floods again, and that water from all the drainage system in the town starts running that sinkhole, you're going to have the same problem you had for twenty years. You're going to have brown, black water in the county of Fort White.
And that's.
I've lived here for twenty years, Bill's lived here all of a while, we, I've lived here as long as this water system been here. We've had droughts before, the water clears up, you think we got good water? If you go back to the history of the town of Fort White since they've had water system, every mayor has had to deal with residents complaining about the water. Every mayor. It's not, it's not new. The, the water system, the problem with the water's not new, it's been going on for as long as this water system's been in Fort White. We've had studies run, Bill said it at the last meeting, we have, we've run tests on wells all around here. You got to go nowhere to get good water, or you wait for the river. And at one time, I said, I think I said this at the meeting, at one time, we got a well on, on my, at my office over there, the only well in Fort White had any kind of decent water. At one time, we were using that well, the S and S was using that well, the B and B was using that well, the funeral home was using the well and the post office, all of us was using that well because you could not drill a good well on their property, they couldn't get a well on their property, that the water was usable. That's the fact. Donald Hall, the guy that's doing the work that's on y'all well right now, he serviced that well and, and now I'm promoting on that well. So I'm just telling you, 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 if Fort White wants to run the water and they want to have wells, they need to drill wells somewhere else and run water to the town. Because I don't ever believe you're going to get the water on a permanent basis with those wells there.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and, and, yeah, I, I don't disagree, that can be part of the meeting is, hey, we'll let the town residents decide if it's cheaper to just buy it and not deal with it, that information can be presented as well. My, my thing is not, at the end of the day, whether we go this way or that way. I'm just saying, let's present this new information to the town.
But the whole. But let me ask you a question, Mayor. Your whole premise is going to take water over though? Because the whole premise.
Wait, I'm going to let, wait, 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 wait. Commissioner Ford, I'll let you, give, 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 give me one second and I'll ask a question. So, ju- just, just to clarify, that's the, I'm not saying, let's go left or let's go right. I'm just saying, let's break, go ahead.
I'm asking you, is that your, is that your reason for what they have to water?
No, no.
To provide money to the general fund?
No, no, no.
I heard you say it at the last meeting, now we can put so much money to this and we can put so much money in our general fund?
Correct, the vast majority of it should go back to the utility for emergencies, for et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for things that may arise as there may be issues with the water utility. Of course, the vast majority. Some amount of it, depending on what we're charging and what we're collecting and what we, we're seeing at the fees, some amount, some amount of that can be revenue for the town. Not a majority, not even a huge portion, but some of it. Whereas right now, we're not getting much for the water, or if anything, I don't think we got anything this year for the water. So that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying let's go this way or that way, I'm saying let's, let the people decide, that's.
My question for you would be, if you're making a surplus on the water and you're providing for the system and, and doing all the maintenance and repairs to the system, shouldn't you give the citizens of the town a permit? For that's what?
Potentially, that'd be up to the councils to determine. Right, yeah. Yeah, it's not, yeah, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to that either. Anyway, so that.
I don't know if the, if the gains are greater than the risk when you have the county go in the vacuum and do the necessary repairs and whatnot.
The question is, with this new information, should be allowed the residents to have a final decision. That's really the question.
There's not really any new information, you just happen to test on a particular day or a particular month. This is a twenty plus year problem of pollutants in the water.
Not for the Florida DEP. As soon as we switched over to the chloramines, just like Ellisville, we now have clean water, just like Ellisville. So what, what I'm saying, I mean, I guess what's the harm in just presenting it to the people and letting them decide that? Really, that's wrong. Don't understand, I guess.
I would like the council to vote on it right now.
Can I have one more issue before you? What, what, what?
We have a september meeting.
We're waiting that.
We had a september meeting, we asked the public to come, these guys have been here longer than me some of them. I've been here way longer than you, twenty four years. But I would like to see where the council stands on this before we go any further with this.
I have a question. Oh, can I ask you a question before you vote?
All right, you got it, I'm going to give you a minute.
I hate to do this, Mr. Lucker. Now, what, Stu Wilk, I own a sixty eight mile town here and paying county taxes, the county just recently had a utility meeting. So, you should know this, this is the one thing that hasn't been brought up, my understanding at that meeting was, you're not going to be able to do a rate study for about eight months. And Rocky just, just like a sugar, he said, yes. So until the town, you know, until I know, everybody knows how much you're going to pay for water. I don't know with that, I don't know if that's put in the cart before the course, I think that's just a bit of information that the town council should know, that the rate study will determine the rate that the town of Fort White pays. You're not going to know the rate for approximately eight months, I don't want to get into the business for that. So that may be something you may wish to consider during the duration.
Thank you, and regard, regardless of when the rate, thank you, but we're, we're not making a decision on that right now, regardless of whether or not there is or when there is or isn't a rate study. Floor is open for a motion. Do we want to add?
I think the county would like to add something.
So, so that has been discussed about the rate study. And Mr. Lucker is correct, we were going to have the rate study done and they were going to determine the cost for, what caused the water. It is going to be about eight months on that study, we didn't realize that it took that long to do one. But we have agreed, and I talked to David Kraus about this, that we would have Florida Rule, an inch, Florida Rule Water, an independent company come in here, look at this, and they can determine what the rate should be. So that's not, that's not an issue, the rate.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, and I, I don't, we're not making a decision on the rate right now, one way or the other, so. Do, do we want to ask the county, once and for all, hey, hold off on the Ellisville water for sixty days?
No.
Let's let the residents decide now that we have clean water, present the information to them, let them say which way they want to go, put it to bed once and for all, sixty days, until the first of March.
I think Bill was trying to make a motion, started off with. I think Bill was trying to make a motion, started off with the meeting in September. What were you gonna say?
I'm gonna make a motion to vote on this one or deny it. We agreed on it now. We got one new council member, one new mayor. And I, I mean, we done this interlocal agreement with the county and we spent seven million dollars between the county and the city, which the county spent the most of to get the water here. Now you say, well, what, what? What does that have to do with the state that gave that money to do this? To do this? This was well studied before we got our hands on it. I mean-
And, and, you know-
So make your motion.
And in the case of, there, in the case of Fort White Water Plant ever does for whatever reason, have issues. And the Ellisville water is right there. It wasn't a total or a complete waste.
I'll make a motion that we stay with the interlocal agreement with the county for them supplying the water.
If that's your-
That's fine. Okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't interrupt. If that's your position, Mr. King, we don't really need, I mean, we're in the interlocal agreement. So-
I wanna see where the other people, the other council stands.
You're just asking for, for a, for a-
A clarification of where this council stands.
That would be a motion. That would just be a communication with the board because we're in the-
We're already in the local agreement.
So unless someone's voting to get out of it, then we don't need a motion. But you got, you, you could-
I wanna see where the council stands.
I might be wrong, but I'm thinking you're saying we don't need another sixty days.
Exactly right. Exactly what I'm saying.
Okay. So I don't know how to word it in, in your motion.
He said, I'm gonna do it. I'm just getting a clarification of where this council stands with the, with the water.
Continuing the interlocal agreement or moving forward.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's just a discussion amongst the council, not a motion.
Do, do we wanna wait till the water's clean? Before we take it? Or do we wanna switch the residents of Fort White from clean water to water that's outside of the maximum capacity levels?
Mr. Mayor, could I get my, could I get my question answered?
Oh, go ahead.
Please, from the council? I've sat over here and waited my time and then-
My answer is to go with the interlocal agreement with the county concerning the water.
What's going on? I'll do that.
I wanna keep it on water.
I would like to run our own water, sir.
I think you go with the county.
Okay. So as, so as far as whether or not we wanna wait the sixty days, I mean, one, just to get a clean, guys, I mean, dirty water right now, I mean. So I, I would say, one, just to get clean, make sure the water from Ellisville finally tests, not, well, not finally, to be fair, it's normally clean, but that it tests clean again. Wait that sixty days, you get a clean test, we have a special meeting. It's over, once and for all. Wait, 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 hey, wait, 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 oh, oh, oh.
Well, I'm just gonna tell you, the water has to be tested before it can be turned on.
Oh, okay, okay, very well. Okay, good, all right, good.
The water has to be, have it tested a year before it can be turned on this system.
Okay, so procedurally, it has to be cleaned.
It has to be tested, yes. The whole line has to be tested.
Good, okay, good.
The water and the line.
That, okay, good, that's, I didn't know that. Makes sense. Regardless, floor is open for a motion. We present this information to the residents of the town of Fort White. We let them have a final say. We, you know, millions has gone into that water plant. Guess what? The water's clean now. To me, that's a success story. And I thank the county, and I thank the county. I thank the county. I think that was their goal, was to get us to the water.
For how long?
So, so, so that's why I say, I say we have a meeting, maybe. The county says, hey, once it rains, the water will be dirty. The floor, Department of Environmental Protection would disagree. So I'll say, let's present that information to the people. You know, take that interpretation, we choose who we wanna believe. Really, really, ultimately choose what the people say. And we voted out. No, it's, it's not a moneymaker. It's not a cash cow. But I say that we, I, I said, I mean, I said, so I, the floor is open for a motion if we wanna formally request the Board of County, Columbia County Commissioners, say, hey, can you please, please hold off until the first of March, till we make a final decision, once and for all?
What, what are they holding up on?
Turn the water on? Yeah, turn it on.
We got a local agreement. With the, you go council local agreement? We got a local agreement, we're gonna proceed with that right now.
And that, and that, and that would be a part of the special meeting? Floor, floor is open for a motion.
We had that meeting in September.
Without the information that we have now.
Right, that's right.
Without the information that we have now.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I think-
I think you can ask your attorney, but I think the interlocal agreement gives us the right to do what we wanna do out there. Regardless of what y'all say.
I'll, I'll debate.
Are you asking me that question?
Yes, 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 go ahead.
Because Mr. Foreman, that answers Mr. Ford's question. Um, so if you're asking me that,
Yes, I am.
Then the interlocal agreement right now gives the county the authority to move forward as they see fit, okay? Um, I believe what you were asking this council is to ask the county to not, if they get Ellisville hooked up and if they get clean tests, et cetera, et cetera, to not move forward with turning on the water and running the water here and et cetera, until we have another meeting sometime down the road.
I put a hard day on it. Sixty days until the first of March. Hard day. No, we go past, too bad.
And so, so that's what the council needs to understand, that, that you're asking the council to consider. Now, the council could consider that. They could vote for it. They could pass it. And the county can say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, yeah. So as long as it's on the table.
Right. Yeah, okay, we're just asking so that we can present the information to the residents of the town. The county can say, no, you're getting Ellisville water. They can say that. Floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to respect the decision that the town made during the September meeting concerning the water and the interlocal agreement.
So specifically- To, to, based to, the county turns on Ellisville water whenever they want.
Well, it'll have to pass the test. And do y'all have a projected date, Rocky?
To be on my business.
Yeah.
Is what I was told, now that's-
I vote for that. I don't know if they're-
If they're looking, it would be a vote. Exactly. I mean, again, great, I'm, I'm sorry, I feel like I keep interrupting.
No, we want you to. We're sitting up here.
I try not to talk unless specifically ask a question by the council or if I feel you're going to say that. We have interlocal agreement. The county's running the water. They're gonna just keep going forward, doing what they, what they feel is in the best interest of the town of Fort White until you tell them otherwise. And so you guys don't need to vote on anything. You don't need to, to direct anything. The only thing that you could do at this point, or at some point, is to say, interlocal agreement is canceled. Until that time, there's no direction that this council really gives to the county. I mean, the same direction could be conversations, it could be, uh, you know, commentary, stuff like that, but we can't vote on, on anything, you know, that would relate to it other than-
We can, we can request that they delay it until March.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
That's all I'm saying. They can say no. Residents of Fort White will decide what they decide. Floor is open for a motion if you wanna just ask the county. Just ask them. Request from them. Don't turn on the Ellisville water until the first of March.
I will not make that motion. Y'all speak up some more.
I will. I'll make a motion to, uh, ask.
It's a request.
To, to request, give us sixty days to bring all information public.
Is there a second? Okay, there is just that the residents of Fort White can decide. That's all this is. Once and for all, on top of that, the county can deny it. Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor of just, again, this is a request for sixty days? So we can have a meeting for the residents of the town of Fort White, let them make their decision based on this new information? Say aye. Aye. I'll oppose, say nay?
Nay.
Well, residents of Fort White will not find out this information, at least not before the Ellisville water comes on. All right, your motion to adjourn.
I'll make one, I'll make one. This letter out here we got, and she, and then we got two, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 the letter. Okay, so, so the letter, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I want more comment about the water.
Oh, 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 oh. Let, let's get into this. So I went over the cease and desist letter earlier, but basically, yeah, we, we were trying to dig the well deeper. We weren't trying, we were in the process of digging the well deeper as the town council had already voted. Then the county sent a cease and desist. They said, you, you can't dig your well deeper. That, that, that is just informational purposes. That's, definitely.
At risk of being ignorant, um, I was not aware that our actions of the torpedo thing, and, and that's what I'm thinking is digging it deeper. Was that via a torpedo or is that someone out there shoveling it?
We asked for a torpedo and that did not happen. They did not, never do the torpedo, did I know of?
So I don't, I just wasn't aware of everything that came with that vote.
The, the, so the purpose of- Right, right.
So I was part of breaking the interlocal agreement, I guess, in voting yay to torpedo the well?
No.
So they're, so they're drilling, they're drilling deeper to get the water samples? Yeah, okay.
We, we didn't write the interlocal agreement. We didn't write the interlocal agreement.
Did we vote to dig it deeper?
We absolutely did.
We, we voted to dig a test well deeper.
Okay.
Okay. That should have been coordinated with the county. All it would have took, one phone call, when can we do this? When would be a good time to do this? That's all it would have took.
And I'm guilty of that, not being-
None of y'all are guilty, yeah, because, because it didn't happen. Well, I said it happened, there wasn't, there wasn't a break in. We, the operator of record of the well, the water system, is twofold, is that correct? Is that correct, man? It's twofold. Twofold was contacted by the town after we voted to dig the test well. As we discussed earlier, twofold is employed by who? The county, okay? So we contacted our agent, who was also their agent, to coordinate. Now, somewhere and between that contact and twofold or whoever brought in the person that actually digged the well or digged the test well or extended the well, someone at the county level feels like they weren't part of that equation. That's not the town's fault. The town coordinated with the person who runs the water for both the town and the county. So I was as surprised as anyone else to see the cease and desist letter, which actually came from Mr. Kraus and not from the foreman, uh, who, you know, if, if the town was going to cease and desist later, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter. As you said earlier, building bridges, okay? Uh, we need to build bridges. Don't wanna fight with anybody. I think what we all need to convey, talking to the, to the council, although there's other people in this room who can hear my voice, who sit on the county commission, is that in the future, when you're gonna do stuff like this, why don't you just pick up the phone and say, hey, what's going on? Oh, we told, we told twofold, we were doing this. Oh, it's twofold that we employed? Yeah, sure, okay. And I'll understand. So a lot of this stuff, we, we gotta quit fighting the county. The county and the county gotta quit fighting. You know, we agreed a district on that. We could do it, like, similarly. So I think this is just one of those examples where we voted, we had big talk about it, we had presentation about it, we didn't do it secretly that we were gonna, you know, test this well, took that out of water, did it, contacted the person we were supposed to contact, wherever it fell off, or whatever after that. I don't really think it was, I, I think it's just a miscommunication. It's just a miscommunication. It probably could have been fixed with a couple of phone calls. It's no big deal. I agree with your rights. It's, it's really not, it's not as big a deal as it was made out to be, and I believe, and I was, I had a busy day, and I think there were some emails that came out today from some of the other people who were basically, I say the other people, I think it might have been twofold or maybe the water off way or someone, basically backing that up and saying, yeah, there was, there was communication and maybe it was just a misunderstanding of who was told. So I don't think it's as big a deal as, as, as it appears.
We got a well around here capped off that's don't have a pump on it. If that pump that's running our water goes out, well, I have no water. From what I understand, they filled that well full of concrete.
I said, I thought I said it a hundred times. I'm not a water guy.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think it's bigger than you think it is.
Yeah, so the con, so the concrete, the concrete is not to stop up the well so that we can no longer use it. The concrete is that we can, there are data. I think the people should, Fort White should have had the right to this information, but the, it's possible that the quality of the water was degraded and what I was forgetting, is the well water, which one has the worst water, well two, uh-
No, well one has the worst water. Well two is the one that we're doing deeper.
Yeah, yeah, so, well, it's possible that the quality of the water could have even been better just based on the fact that when there's loose particles that get into the water, obviously it's not gonna be as clean. So the concrete was to keep going out and then you drill through the concrete. So concrete can't hurt the water quality. Anything that might help.
Can I say that?
So it was to stop, oh, yeah.
When they took the pump out, they put a camera down to look. Those two cavities that were shown on that diagram that was presented before, instead of being down at like a hundred and fifty feet, those cavities had caved in. As a result, we were not getting the water down from those cavities up through the well. We were getting it from the top, which was where the sediment and all the sediment is in there. That's why the water has been so crappy. So the well driller advised to fill that in with cement all the way down to keep it from imploding any further and to have any further intrusion from the broken up limestone that's down there. And once that cement was poured down in there, it had to dry and then drilling back down through the cement and all it's doing is forming a cement casing around there to keep further intrusion from coming in. The well is saying, well, he's just gonna go down now and go down deeper. Which is what y'all voted on to do.
One more time. Would it not have been easy to pick up a phone call, the county, that we have voted to test this well? Be real test well. When would be the best time to do this that won't hurt the water?
And, and, yeah, yeah, sure, and, and moving forward, what I believe happened was that per the interlocal agreement, we didn't need to notify the county. It's only, the, the interlocal was written, it says only expansion to the Fort White Water Plant. So the town council had voted, so it was, okay, well, this, this is not an expansion, we're just drilling deeper or better. So it's not an excuse, not a back and forth. I, I think the reason why it was notified was that. That's all I'm saying. In the future, those communicate, Senator? Yes, I am.
If something happens around there right now, you know you're gonna get blamed, the county. Ain't taking up all of them. There's something we intruded on, that, that what they're running. We gotta interlocal agreement for them to run that water plant. Well, we got one of your wells capped off. But hopefully right now, it doesn't sound-
The pump was taken out, because the pump was taken out to be cleaned as well. It would have to have been taken out in January anyway because you have iron bacteria buildup on it. And they had to take it out six months ago and it was down for several days in order to clean the well. Because, I mean, the pump, what happens is that iron bacteria builds up on the pump. It restricts the flow and the, uh, flow goes down on the water system. So it was the perfect time. It needed to be done. So rather than pull it again in January in order to utilize the funds that were for the grant monies that y'all voted on to do, it had to be done now. And so in conjunction with that, they went ahead and they're cleaning the pump instead of pulling it again in January to clean the iron bacteria sediment out of the pump.
Any, any other comments before we move on to citizen comments? Before we make a motion to adjourn? Before we make a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Terry, you got something with the Santa Claus thing?
Yeah, I was just going to say that that's spectacular with all the help from the community and the donations of either physically being there, or physical labor, I'm pointing at Alex back there. And we had such distinguished guests, everybody commented on that. Rocky was there, Dana Bradygins, Miss United States, Bill Coon made an appearance, Connie has a report on the money.
Nine hundred dollars was donated, and the final, I think the final receipts that we've got now is with a leftover three twelve.
A surplus of three twelve, or a negative of three twelve?
A surplus. On that same note, and this might not fall under this agenda, but I'm just going to say it, I'd like to see the town of Fort White go ahead and do the parade, rather than that the individuals under the business thing. They didn't do anything wrong, but I just think that's something that the town of Fort White can do. And they did put everything out late, and the tourism development in Lake City was concerned about everything getting out late. And I know your wife hustled and fussed to do the flyers, and everyone was impressed with the flyers. But if we could just clear that through a vote like September of next year, to get that done.
What about the water for the county?
It's clean. After everything, I went back down and cleaned it again, so.
So...
So what happened is, we were all fatigued and going to the parade, so we left some things, we didn't leave anything dirty, but we left some stuff in the kitchen where I was just going to pick it up the next day, and dead tired, I waited until Monday, which is today, to clear everything out, and church had been there on Sunday following our Saturday event.
I saw the picture, I think Debbie just got back from the community center a couple hours before the meeting started, so she has the photos, I mean, it's not...
Well, it's spotless, we like to put photos and everything.
There's trash, there's trash, the bathroom trash cans, I mean, I...
The floors have to be cleaned.
Yeah, the floors.
Well, I'm through with the cleaning, so we can vote to use that other money on the hundred and fifty dollars of cleaning.
Yeah, yeah. We can vote, yeah.
I made a motion to pay a hundred and fifty dollars to clean the community center.
Do we have a second?
So how do we say that it was from the, the event when they had service on Sunday?
Because we had stuff, we left stuff in there, it wasn't...
But they said the floors and all of that, so it was a hundred and fifty dollars.
You're watching the floors, the building was cleaned.
Ooh, wow. I don't know about that.
She cleaned the floors.
What's the matter? I, I don't...
And I'm saying that as a compliment, not to say, do a bad job on the floors.
Yeah, I don't, okay. Regardless, and I got to ask more about that, I don't, because we shouldn't do it much. Yeah, I believe Mrs. McCain did the church call and say, hey, this is dirty, we're not going to, we left, they helped me found it, this is dirty, so I don't need to...
That's right.
Hold on a second, make a motion. Very well, all in favor of the CE, the surplus fund, pay and clean the community center, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we got to wait, we got to push. My reason why I think the town should pay for it, if the town left it dirty, I mean, I think it looks bad, and we don't clean it or pay to clean it, but we'll wait for Council to come, we only have two ayes.
I agree, I'd take them, I'd like to...
She made the motion. Oh, you, oh, that's, okay, okay.
Give the ayes to clean the building, we made a motion to take the...
Hundred and fifty.
What in the building needs to be cleaned?
They're saying the bathrooms.
Floors, bathroom floors.
Waffle floors in the bathroom.
But, yeah, the counters.
Hundred fifty, they did the whole thing.
They do it, they just redo plan or redo it.
Do they have to pay all that money?
Yeah.
I think it, you don't need to go down and get that, then you put it on.
Aye, we're at ayes, 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 ayes.
Aye.
Very well, back, quick. We just wanted to do that. All right, citizen comments?
Was there other money besides the one?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, just...
Auto, was there other money besides the nine hundred that was mentioned, he said that was all that was collected? Was there somebody said to go check the...
That included, it was, that was the nine hundred.
I just heard that she had donated a check of three thousand.
Who?
The first lady.
No, they gave us toys. They donated toys.
Just make a search.
Yeah.
There was a lot of toys.
Okay, any other citizen comments? Not, we move to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You got a second? You got a second?
Who made the second?
You got a second? No? A second, okay. All in favor of the citizens, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay, move to adjourn.